All right, mic's on everyone. Welcome to the March 16th, 2023 Planning Board Meeting for Town of Akipsey. Please join me for the live start.
Let the reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And just to let everybody know, on Zoom, we have a full board of seven members tonight. And one note of mention is the, if you're here for Casperkill South Road Development, that's off the agenda, they asked to be pulled off. It's some more work. All right, first up then is Stratford Farms Town Homes. I see it displayed, so we approved that about 10 years ago, I think.
Yes, at least.
You're back with some changes, so go ahead. Most of the board has not seen it yet.
I can share this on Zoom, too.
Yes, that would be good. If you can share your screen. We're doing hybrid meetings, so we still have people online as well as in person here, so.
Just do make sure when, to speak into the microphone because it also helps for the folks on Zoom. All right, thanks.
So I should be sharing the same image on Zoom?
Yep.
Hi, I'm Marty McVannas, engineer with Beatty &amp; Watson, and this is...
Andy Gilchrist, attorney for the project owner.
And Dan Geron and Bill Schuster for the owners are here. As you mentioned, this received preliminary approval about 10 years ago for 26 town homes in roughly the same configuration that we're showing tonight. We've done some minor changes to the layout. The road at one time was a one-way, we've made it a two-way road. It loops completely around. We've done major advances on the grading, the sewer layout, the drainage layout, the water layout. We moved forward with the SWIP and sized some bioretention areas to treat water quality and it will actually provide RRV, which isn't necessarily required because this was approved such a long time ago, but we will be meeting that criteria.
Okay.
We've spoken with the highway department, the water department, the fire department. We've gotten a lot of good feedback from them, and we've addressed at least a round of comments from the town consultants, and we've just received some additional letters with some additional comments that we are prepared to move ahead and work on.
Thank you. This one's Eric, so.
Let's see, it's been a long time, 10 years. The development, this parcel was approved for town homes, actually as far back as 2003 when the single family subdivision of Stratford Farms was created, and at the time it was determined that the density for it of 26 units and 51 bedrooms, if I remember correctly, would be permitted as a result of the overall development. Subsequently, the site plan for the parcel was submitted along with a special use permit application to the planning board, and in 2013 that received a conditional approval from the planning board. The conditions of approval were not completed until recently, last fall, I believe, a submittal was made, and they went through a round of town review. There were some comments. We had a meeting with the applicant, and subsequent to that, the applicant decided that they would like to make a change to the... Minor changes are always incorporated in the review by town, but substantive changes need to return to the board. And the applicant was interested in making the private roadway for the town homes a town dedicated roadway, which would involve an additional approval acceptance by the town board. Therefore, we advised the applicant that we need to go return to the planning board, and that's what they have proceeded to do. Thus, they're in front of you tonight. So with that said, there are a number of comments. The main ones have to do with the proposed road. I understand the engineer and wetland consultant have some comments. Our recommendation tonight has to do with the Department of the Board defer actions subject to comments to refine some of the issues that are presented in the comments from the planning department and other reviewers. I think I'll leave it at that, the comments are in the record. There's quite a few of them.
Right.
So we'll let, and some of them are intended for the board to discuss with the applicants, such as your receptivity to the layout, whether or not there should be amenities, et cetera.
Yep, I think you had mentioned some landscaping had changed since last time also and such, so. All right, start with Andy for Robert's fill-in.
I'm filling in. Bobby Bozek, CPL consultant engineer for town. There's some outstanding comments from the conditional approval, one of which would be about the water system. There's an old comment about providing an engineer's report to analyze the water pressure, the hydrant flows, so that will need to be done. There's a, we would like to see the access road at the east entrance extended to the hillside terrace apartment boundary.
Yes.
To provide emergency access for them. The water department's also requesting that the water main be extended to that boundary so that it could be looped to that apartment complex and provide a loop to Route 44 because the water main currently dead ends on Route 44 there. As far as the dedication of the road and the stormwater, there's some concerns about the use of bioretention because of the maintenance required and the cost of that maintenance. So if that would be dedicated to the town, it would put a pretty big stresser on the highway department to maintain those bioretention facilities, more so than if it were just a regular detention pond that required, you know, mowing, maintenance, and things like that. When you get into the bioretention, you have plantings, you have to uphold and media, and it creates a bit of an expense for the town that we don't have any currently in the town, that the town is obligated to maintain bioretention style, so that's a bit of a concern for us.
All right, thanks Bobby.
Yeah.
In relation to that, yeah, I think that connection would be a good idea, that road. You just gotta watch out for, I think there's a sewer manhole on the, close to the apartment side that you gotta avoid.
Right.
Yeah, there's two, actually.
And if I could speak to that, certainly extending the road to the property line could be considered, but there'll be a gap between the property line and the road within the adjacent hillside terrace.
Right, they would have to be willing to do that.
We don't have the ability to extend that, so if it were required, it would be, in essence, a stub road. Extending the water line and stubbing it there really is not an issue, but the road itself, we only have the ability to go to the property line and stub that.
Yes, obviously. Contact them about their willingness also. All right. And Carol, I think, has reviewed this from a wetlands standpoint, and she had a recommendation on one of the roads, so are you on, Carol?
Carol is not on, as far as I can tell.
She couldn't be here tonight.
She couldn't be here tonight.
Okay, okay. In that case, we'll take a look at Carol Knapp's letter.
That to Aspen.
She's our well, consultant, Aspen, yes, Aspen, around her middle.
Right, if we could speak to that, certainly the project has been reviewed, and the board did previously approve the layout in 2013. Really, nothing has significantly changed from the layout, the road system. Obviously, it's been proposed now to be a two-way and dedicated public road.
It's wider, yeah.
Right. But in terms of any referral, and we're certainly open to discussion with staff on this issue, but referral back to DEC and fish and wildlife, that process has been completed for the project, and so that's something that we certainly are going to want to have a follow-up discussion with staff on. We don't view that as being necessarily, we understand the comment, but given the history. Oddly enough, I do have a history with the project. I was involved with the prior owner of the project and the developer, Bauer Associates, and went through the review process on the overall project, both within the town of Akipsey, and there's a portion of the project in Pleasant Valley. So we went through that process previously, obviously, SECA was completed. We do appreciate staff's comment that this plan is consistent with the existing SECA record and consistent with the finding statement and no reason to reopen, and we concur with that. But we will certainly have a follow-up discussion on the DEC and fish and wildlife issues raised by Aspen.
Yeah, I think her issue was the fact that this plan is 10 years old, and there's a very good possibility there's now blending turtles on this property, so that would be the issue that she would have. So just to be aware of that.
Be aware of that during construction, yeah.
Yeah.
To make sure they're educated. Also, I mean, there's also a chance that, you know, the well, it's changed over time, too, so the delineation that was done back then.
We're certainly not aware of any map DEC wetlands that that has changed, and will certainly address.
Right, it's a 25-foot buffer down.
Mr. Chairman, do you want me to just summarize in a sentence what Carol's points were responding to, since somebody out there knows what they're responding to?
Yep.
Basically, she noted that due to the, as 10 years have passed since that condition approval, some updated information is necessary, and the DEC environmental mapper now indicates that the projects in the vicinity of animals listed as endangered or threatened. The database undergoes constant revision, thus the applicant should contact DEC to determine what species may be present and what protection measures may be required, if ever. And she noted in particular that the clear cutting of the site within range of two protected bat species should require a tree felling restriction, which has become common in recent years. That's my parenthetical comment. And also that Chapter 116 of the Town Code, aquatic resource protection authorization is required for greater than a tenth of an acre, and that the delineation is referred to as based on an old delineation, and that, in quotes. So she is seeking at a minimum, the portion of the pond nearest to proposed development should be delineated, and both the boundary and a 25-foot buffer should be shown. And she noted that a slight modification of the access road nearest the pond would result in complete avoidance.
I actually can speak to that. The .4 acres is actually within 100 feet of the shown pond, so if you go down to 25 feet, it's like 250 square feet, which is .005 acres, so we're not even near the threshold. So that becomes a moot point, and I actually think the pond is smaller than it was.
It may have shrunk.
So I don't think, we're nowhere near having any.
Yeah, without, you know, just without knowing, to have somebody take a look just on that side of it to make sure.
Is it in fact a pond?
It's sort of like a boggy area.
Yeah, it's kind of overgrown.
There's water in it sometimes.
Does it hold water of any depth?
I don't think so. I mean, Bill, I mean, there's probably no water in it. Yeah, there's a lot of trees.
Just came up in discussion, it's towns, it's pretty much building.
They have that probably with apple farm, and everything kind of drained down that way. You know what I mean? Put roads in and cut everything off. There's gonna walk water running down.
Okay, it just came up in discussion, you might, if you have any information. I know you've got topography for the land, if you have any information on the depth there, that might, that might be useful because some questions about the standing water there came up in discussion, and just to get ahead of it for next time, if we have that information, might take care of the questions ahead of time. That's all.
Yep, I mean, looks pretty much.
We actually had a temporary pond alongside of Kensington.
You know, Bill, could you speak in?
You're gonna have to speak into the microphone if we're gonna continue to get comments, because people at home can't hear you.
Yeah, just identify yourself and...
I'm Bill Schessler with ABD Stratford. I was just saying that we had put a temporary pond along Kensington Lane that was due when we were doing construction right there, and since then, we put houses in there, filled in the temporary pond because of the water coming off the map. But now that construction is finished along through there, there's no longer any ponds because there's no water goes into our drainage system. So that's probably why the pond that we're talking about.
Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't really, doesn't really look like a pond at the moment. It's not overgrown, so.
The picture may be a bit deceptive.
Yeah, but we just...
Nice and blue.
But we just make sure the, you know, I's are dotted, T's are crossed.
Yeah, understood, yes.
All right, so.
I think then the only other questions were about the garbage pail and the mailboxes and things like that, they're all minor.
Things we could address. We'll go around the board and see whatever his comments are, but first, I move we open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved in second, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. Is there anyone on the Zoom or in the audience here that wishes to comment on the Stratford Farm project?
Mr. Chairman.
Can you, can you unshare your screen for a minute, so we can see if anybody's...
Yeah, there is a hand raised.
Waving on Zoom here.
Yeah, I have a hand raised from a, it looks like a phone number, 845, last three digits are 115. You can unmute yourself.
Star six to unmute your phone.
Thank you.
If you wish to talk on this project. Doesn't look like that.
Try one more time, star six to unmute if you wanted to speak, person on the phone with the raised hand.
Oh, there we go.
There we go.
Did you, you have a comment on this project?
I do not.
Okay.
Oh.
All right. Thanks, yep, that's, that's how Zoom works.
I will lower the hand.
All right, seeing, see, when do you think you'd be able to come back for the April or, is this the middle for April, it's pretty close.
Well, two points, we certainly...
When is this middle?
Well, the submittal is Monday, the 27th. Among the staff comments is a recommendation that the applicant meet with some of the consultants just to review and go over some of the, some of the questions, and that will help, it's our opinion that that will help advance the application and actually progress it more quickly if we're able to work those items out outside of that. I don't know if we can both do that and also get changes to the plans by the time of the April meeting, so on that basis, May might be a better...
Yep, we don't disagree with that. It would make sense to go on the May agenda, meet with staff and try to address the comments administratively.
And if you have anything to do yet.
Correct.
Update the plans and...
One thing I would raise with that, since there were no public comments, if the board would consider closing the public hearing and we continue the administrative review with staff and come back to the board pre-Pre-May meeting.
It's just our, you know, as long as we're doing it, we generally adjourn.
Yeah, we generally keep it open.
So just, just in case, but I don't think there will be a lot of those projects. So I move we adjourn the public hearing to May 18th, 2023.
Second.
Moved in second, it calls to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. All right, now we'll go around the board for comments.
If you wanted, there are also comments in the packet from the sports traffic consultant who's available if you'd like.
Is Mark on the call from JMC?
Yes, hello.
All right.
Good evening, everyone, it's Mark Petrow from JMC, behalf of the town's traffic consultant. Just, I only had some minor comments on here, it's really to provide some context as far as the signs that are proposed as part of the application, and the, referencing them to the specific size, color, and MUTCD supplement or regulatory number. But besides that, I didn't have any major comments. I know I had a review in a previous submission, but the submission has been addressed in this recent resubmission by the applicant.
Okay, thanks, Mark, you only have a couple of comments on here.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, go around, start with Peter.
It's been 10 years since I've seen this, so there's some things that are, the, a little concerned here about, I wanted to hear from the highway superintendent, just to get his comments. My only concern there is really not about the town road, it's about snow removal. I don't recall if, in the original, in the plan that we approved 10 years ago, if there was an allowance for snow storage, but he had about 700 feet or so of road there. You have a 190-degree turn and 170-degree turn, that's not easy for snowplow to maneuver and deposit snow where it should go. So specifically, I'd like to hear from the highway superintendent with regard to his views in terms of snow, what we do in those cases. The other question I had was, we have engineering comments from Andrew Lern, who unfortunately couldn't be with us tonight. There are 42 comments, I mean, that's extensive. I'd like to know really the basis of those comments. I mean, are these new items, items that hadn't been addressed in the past, or is it just an update? Or really, what is the substance of...
Right, so most of the comments are about the SWIP, which I've done all the calculations, I did not provide him with that document, so once I gave him that document, most of those comments are...
So mostly these are SWIP related?
It's just the SWIP.
Okay, and the other comment, I'm sure that you'll address is from...
If you don't mind me chiming in.
Yep.
There about, I would say about half the comments are about the SWIP. There's a handful of old comments from the prior approval, but there is a, there's a pretty substantial amount of new comments.
There are.
Relating to the utilities, how the road layout's gonna work, if it is to be dedicated. There, there's quite a few comments.
So the applicant will address those prior to our phone. And the other comment was from the fire department with regard to the fire protection water supplies, which I'm sure they will address.
I spoke to the fire department this week.
Thank you.
And I spoke to the highway superintendent.
Thanks.
Thanks, Peter. Yeah, I mean, that's what we're looking for as part of your, you know, when you have the offline meeting, you make sure the highway superintendent and you, the town board's gonna be receptive to taking this over as a town road. All right, Ben, what do you think?
Nothing at this time.
All right, Nicole?
No, I don't think I have anything. I was just wondering whether or not you're, what you're doing with open space, are you gonna have any amenities or not?
Well, a couple of points there.
Okay.
One, with the town home project, there will be an HOA.
Okay.
So for common areas, the proposal would be to transfer title to the HOA, and they would own, operate, maintain.
Okay.
So that's ownership and maintenance of open space. The second part, I think, was onsite amenities in terms of recreation.
Right.
Playground or something.
And so here, really, it's a balance between, if there's on, available onsite for recreation facilities, then the park and rec, park and rec fee generally is not required. If there's a park and rec fee to be paid, then the proposal would just be to keep it an open space and we're available during the administrative review to talk through that.
Okay. Thank you.
Go to Rocco.
A couple of quick things, this package in here, are these similar townhouses that will be built?
Yes.
Okay, so I live in a townhouse complex also, and I was looking at the amount of parking spaces for guests, and this is 21 units?
26.
26, well, we have about eight for every 20 or so, so that's kind of in line. But however, the driveways that I see here, and I couldn't tell how long, how many cars can fit in each driveway?
So most of the units will have a two-car garage.
Right, I know that.
With two parking spaces in front of them, so.
Right, so only one car lane, okay.
One car lane.
Right.
And then there's one unit that has a stacked garage, and it still has two garages, and that would only have one parking space in front of it.
Right, okay, so where, so where I live, you can fit two cars back to back in the driveway, so that, and even then, the eight spaces, you can usually find the space, but not, but not always type of thing. So that's kind of a concern that, you know, people tend to leave their cars out instead of putting them in the, in the garage, et cetera. So I'm kind of thinking about that to see if that, if something else, maybe the addition, additional guest spots, because...
We are providing nine at this...
All right, I read eight, but nine, okay, nine, all right.
I think it's nine.
Right, but again, is that you're missing that additional space in each driveway where you can picky back the cars, so.
Well, most of them do have two, most of them have two.
Right, but only one depth. You can't, where I am, you can fit, in most, all of the driveways, there's two car lengths you can fit in there.
You can fit four cars.
Right, for those that have a two-car garage, those that have a one-car garage, you can fit two. So that's my challenge, for now, anyway.
Okay, so I'm gonna think about another space or two.
Right, it'd be something because I know, I know the way they are, and things fill up.
All right.
No comments at this time.
John?
I have no comments at this time, thank you.
All right, take a look at mine here, I guess I'd, you would, I thought of something about maybe a couple shade trees or something in the common area. I don't know if you even, depends what your target audience is, if you're thinking, if there's gonna be kids or not, a small playground, that kind of thing, but I echo the visitor parking concern. And I think everybody else has said everything else. The, you know, the other thing I want to say is, you know, I know it's gonna be a good project, I've toured, you know, one of the houses up there, and it's a quality product, so I assume these townhouses will be as well, as well, quality built, so, and this plan follows about what it was 10 years ago for the board members, I haven't seen it yet. So it's just that mainly the road width is widened to make it two lanes and try to dedicate it to the town is the biggest change.
Can I just make one quick comment? Yeah, just to Mr. Gilchrist's comment, just, you know, I want to remind the board that we do often ask for some amenity, right, for the, for the people actually living there, so whether it's a playground or a sitting area or something like that outside, it's not meant for the public, you know, it's not a town park or anything like that, so it's, it would still require that the recreation fees be paid for the purposes of, you know, public recreation. But I think the planning board would be with, you know, within its right to ask for some type of outdoor amenity for, for the project, so please, you know, do consider that.
And that said, I guess we're moving forward.
I move the, I move the planning board defer amended final major subdivision and amended site plan approval subject to the following. Respond to the following said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness included of, but not limited to, 1 through 15.
Second.
Moved in second, it calls to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. All right, yeah, try to do that offline meeting and move forward quickly back.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hard to believe we're talking about May already.
Let the smell out. And next up is all space self-storage. And next up is all space self-storage.
Good evening. Guess I got to give you closer. Good evening. Ken Casmento from LRC.
Kelly Leibert with Page Park Associates.
If I may, I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. Not done this in person yet. So, can you see?
I see it.
Not having the visual of seeing what I'm saying, just wanted to make sure.
No full-scale mock-up?
Yeah, you know. Next time. No, so we've been before the board since the last meeting. We did meet with Andy and Carol to work through the stormwater and some of the wetland impacts. I believe at this time, we've accomplished the goal of what, that the project can be approved through SWIP and stormwater requirements. So there are some technical details still to work out and work with Carol on a potential mitigation plan for the wetland impact. And we have a process and a plan to go forward. We will need a Army Corps permit for that. So we will need also a permit from the town, an aquatic resource permit, for the buffer impacts. And there's a small wetland impact as well.
All right. Thanks.
So that, if I can, just a couple of quick things. We do have the cross-sections there. One of the last times we were here, we did, were asked to look at some of the views, both in the winter and summer. I know I had provided some photos in the summer up at the top, but we do have a photo in the winter at the bottom, roughly at the same angle of what was there before. As you can see, there is still a pretty substantial tree growth in there, albeit deciduous trees, but they are pretty much there as well. We discussed the proximity to the rail trail and the elevations, and we both felt that, you know, the elevation of the rail trail being much lower than the site, there were no visual impacts. There's no way to see the buildings at all really from that, especially with the landscaping proposed along that side of the property. North Grand Avenue, we have one entrance proposed on the, what would be the north side by the hydrant, and that's emergency access only. So there'll be no vehicular traffic that would come in and out of this project onto that side of the site. There is, as you can see, a slight rise in the topography along the property line.
Yes.
And then right about the crest of that is where we're proposed to plant some eastern firs, red cedars. Again, on the top is the summer conditions. On the bottom, the bottom left, you'll see the hydrant and the pole. The drive comes out, emergency access drive comes out between those. On the right-hand side, you'll see a little bit of the wall on the left side of the photo. That's the edge of where we do our grading. So the top of that little hill there, a little bit gets cut off, but that's about where the trees get planted on that side of the North Grand Avenue side.
Can you remind us again the height of the buildings themselves?
I think they're 12.
And the top is, I think they're 13.
13.
Plus the, yeah, it's a tiny bit of a slope.
The, the zone does allow for 40 feet if it was a multifamily-type building. But we are proposed, the use is pretty mundane in the sense of activity on the site relative to the current use. The lighting is facing the outside. We've talked to the manufacturer. We can do shielded lights, so we can put downlighting on it so that it doesn't have any glare, and we protect that for off-site.
Is it, is it 24-hour access? Trying to remember.
Yes.
Okay.
It is. So.
You can have those lights all night, but.
But they'll be pointed down.
But I want to make sure they're not glaring yet.
Correct.
They're pretty well shielded, so with the shields, you know, it just almost points directly down so people can see right on that path. It doesn't really shine out and illuminate the whole parcel.
Yep. And one of the items that Eric points out in his letter that we would like to also request is the waiver of the EV for parking because it's not open to the public. So we don't intend anyone to be in there parking to put, charge their vehicles. Looked at, I'll turn it back over.
Sounds good. Thanks, Ken. Eric?
Sure, apartments renovation. It's been a few months since this was before the planning board. So just to recap, it's for, it's in front of the board for seeker review and also a rezoning recommendation to the town board because there is a proposed rezoning of this site that will need to occur before the board. The board will need to complete its seeker review before the town board can act on zoning. And then the town board will need to act on the zoning before the board can consider granting any approvals. So the main issue for the board today is whether or not the project is ready for a seeker determination. So to that end, the staff have provided an option either way, to continue the open public hearing on the project and then to adjourn it pending the time, as such time they come back. And then the board can either defer the application or they can act on a negative declaration and then defer it. And if there's a, there's a neck deck in your, in your packets for that purpose if you choose.
Yep.
Comments were, we, staff felt like the, as the applicant noted, engineer and wetland comments are pretty well addressed, and I think their comments will bear that out when they speak. As far as planning comments, I think the remaining issues are really board discretion. They have to do, the board was interested before in the sightlines and visibility of the structures from adjoining residences. And I provided kind of a, I took a pretty good look at their cross-sections, and it seems like they're generally fairly effective to varying degrees. So it's, it's really up, certainly from the rail trail is screened because of topography and from Pell Road direction. It seems pretty well screened, North Grand, there's maybe the line of trees. There might be a little bit through the trees. So that's really board's discretion. And the two issues there are both sections of the code that, that give the planning board discretion. They do not require variances. One of them is the 100-foot setback from all improvements from a residential use. And the other was the, oh, that loading and unloading to be screened from due of any street. So those are, we have our comments there, and the board can discuss and decide how it would like to proceed.
All right, thanks, Eric. Go to Bobby for any, any comments on this.
Yeah, our comments left are relatively minor. As Ken mentioned before, after these comments were issued, Ken and Andy met with Carol and went over everything. And Andy, you know, asked me to pass along that he is confident that they have addressed all the concerns and will address all the concerns, and he's comfortable moving forward.
So good, good for seeker.
Yeah, yep.
Okay. And that includes Carol's?
I believe so.
She had, she had worked with you guys for quite a while.
Yes, we have.
Trying to, you moved the buildings around a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
It's a tough site for the drainage and everything is.
It is.
Part of the issue.
She did provide a letter indicating that the town would accept the, the applicant has committed to an application to the Army Corps, the permit that will serve as the town's application, and that she thought the enhanced wetland functions that under discussion would satisfy the requirements for seeker. And the mitigation plan remains to be detailed. And a couple of typos in notes on the plans with regard to species protection.
Okay. And I think there's some comments about the question, if you have to do rock crushing or do you need to? I think that was in the hearing. Somebody's commented, do you need rock crushing?
Oh, no, we're not proposing rock crushing. There was a conflict between the EAF saying no rock crushing and the plan said potential or vice versa. But we're not proposing any rock crushing of it.
Okay, that's good to know.
And we'll put a note on the plan as such.
All right, let's move the plant, move, move over to the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second, it called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Anyone in the room or on Zoom wish to comment on the all-space application? Can you raise your hand on Zoom?
There's a couple of people on, on the phone on Zoom. So if you use star six to unmute yourself, you'll be able to provide comments if that's your intention.
When do you think you want to try to resubmit? But you have to go to the town board.
We have to go to the town board.
Go for May 8.
Correct.
And will we adjourn the public hearing to May 18, 2023?
Second.
Moved in second, it calls to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Were on the board for comments. Start with Joan.
Hi. I think at the last planning board, the neighbor appeared. Have you been in touch with the neighbor across? I think it's on Grand Street, North Grand?
We have not met with them at all. We had talked about it after the meeting a little bit and explained what it was and hadn't heard back from them.
Okay. Because I do have concerns about the setback and the waiver that the applicant's looking for. You know, it just, it just seems like a disconnect to, to take property that's not residential and then change it to residential and, and not stay with the setback for the other zoning. It's just.
So I guess I would say is, as it's zoned today, that setback alone there would be 30 feet.
Okay.
So if we were to do a multifamily building, we could be within 30 feet of the property line. We're 53 feet away.
Okay.
So we're further away. And we're 145 feet from the house to our building. So we created a pretty extensive area in there specifically, but in trying to keep as much vegetation as we can to make it work in there, obviously on the other end. But the restrictive zone, we've gone 50 feet to the IL and because of the buffer is the 100. So we've added some landscaping in there to protect it as well. So we felt that based on those two, we were adequately screening to what could be in a situation where you could put a three-story multifamily building much closer and more obtrusive to what this is, where there's no activity, there's very little people really there. So it's much more quiet use on the site than actually.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Rocco?
No comment at this time.
Nicole?
I guess this is actually a question for the town. Are they going to need an aquatic resource permit?
Carol said that the Army, yes, that a permit is required.
Okay.
And that the Army Corps application would serve as the town's application.
Okay, all right, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben?
Appreciate all your efforts and as long as the engineering and Carol from Aspen are okay, I don't have a problem.
Thank you. And Peter?
I agree with Ben. I think the applicant has done a good job in responding really to just about all our concerns. My only lasting concern is, again, with the homes on Pell Road, 2930, 39 and 219. What have we done? Has the town reached out to these people at all? I mean, this is a fairly major rezoning from IL to multifamily. Has the town reached out and notified them what's happening?
They would have gotten the public hearing notice for this application.
In, in writing?
Yes. And by, by US mail. And then they will also get, I believe they'll also get a hearing notice for the town board.
Okay, and we've had no response from them?
Only what, only what we've seen and heard at the meetings, previous residents who came. And we, any, any written comments that we receive that way are forwarded to the board.
So in other words, we haven't had any response?
Correct.
I mean, in the previous expansion, we had some comments from Pell Road residents that they're concerned what it would look like, but I haven't heard that they've complained since it's been built.
Correct.
I mean, I, looking at the, the white fir and the eastern white pine, they're 70, 80 feet, but it takes a long time to get that big. But you planted them around, you planted them in an area that at least short-term could provide some, some acceptable screening. I mean, they're ugly buildings, let's face it. So nobody really from their backyard would like to look at them. But to screen them to the, to the extent it's possible, I guess. And they, since we've had no objections apparently from any of the neighbors.
And I would also just interject that between the pines and the existing tree row that's on the property line, that area there isn't going to be, because of the pines, basically left to grow back.
Yeah.
So over time, it will create an even more dense area.
And yet, right now, it's a lot of deciduous there too.
Correct.
See through there right now, but planting the cedars and stuff is good. Is it the same, same materials, the same white roofs as the previous ones? Were you finished, Peter?
Yep.
Okay, I guess that's my, before I jumped in here. So I think it's been said, Lou Feller had a question on. I did notice you're driving, you know, once you go along North Grand, there's quite a berm there, so that berm is mostly staying?
Yes, there's a rock wall there that, that's where it gets cut down. Just to get emergency access.
Appreciate you put the, the house on, the houses on the map here as well. See the sightline. So I, so I think we're good with going, going ahead with seeker, right? And my concerns were this, the lighting, and you've explained that and the screening, so. Let's do seeker.
Yeah, I know.
So first.
Yeah, okay. I move the planning board determine that the proposed all-space self-storage facility expansion project would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the seeker negative declaration for Type 1 action dated March 16, 2023.
Second.
Moved in second, it called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. I did have a question, you know, for the board. We have to do a recommendation to the town board on the zoning change. Does anyone on the board have any? You haven't said whether you consider positive or negative.
I always struggle with the.
Or you can say neutral.
You can say neutral because we, because it's up to the town.
Yeah, I'm going to say neutral, I'm telling you.
Okay, that's.
Ditto.
Ditto, all right.
Yeah, ditto.
All right.
I move the planning board convey a neutral recommendation to the town board regarding adoption of the proposed zoning map amendment to rezone partial 6162-16-860468, plus minus 5.328 acres from the residence multifamily RM district and the light industrial IL district.
Second.
Moved in second for the recommendation. Called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board defer action on this application, pending action by the town board, and a revised mittel by the applicant subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received at town departments and agencies. Said responses to be reviewed by the planning department as adequacy and completeness included, but not limited to 1 through 11.
Second.
Moved in second, it called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Appreciate all the work you, you guys worked with Carol and Andy. They get all these problems solved.
They've been great. Everyone's been great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Forward to the town board. And next up is Haifa Holdings LLC on Main Street. Also, for new board members, this is another project that was approved a while back and just. Probably held up with COVID and all that, just kind of. And if you have the ability to, you know, for, to share your screen also on Zoom, that would help.
I'm sorry.
No, he doesn't. I don't, he's just got the boards, but the camera, the camera will zoom in on that. All right, let that happen. All right, go ahead with your comments.
Good evening, Mike McCormick, Wiscombe McCormick, Men and Vores Architects.
Jimmy Neshwood, one of the owners.
Jimmy Neshwood, one of the owners. So this is an application that the board has seen prior. This is like back to the future. I think it's the third time that's been before the board. Subsequently, the first and second approvals have lapsed, so we're here to come back before the board and reapprove this project because it's now favorable in terms of market conditions and things of that nature. We actually had gone and applied for a building permit the second time and we presented, and everyone we met on the site, and we had a really good meeting where we had some minor issues with the building permit, they were being resolved, and then market conditions with the AB, the developer, Jim, and his uncle decide not to go forward. So now we're back before the board. Nothing has changed at all with this project. It's still the same project that the board has seen twice before, so it's really, you know, it is what it is. So we're here to ask the board's permission to move forward. We have some issues, not the board's own, but our own with regard to the trees that have to come down before the end of this month. So I know that there's a resolution before you, which is really favorable to us, and I think to move the project along, to get the trees done in a timely fashion, there are some conditions that we think we certainly can meet very quickly. Certainly, the zoning administrator had concern with the lighting plan with regard to the foot candles. We have that to make application and show how it is in compliance with the site lighting with the town ordinance. And secondly, I think there was not an issue, but a concern between the attorney, the town attorney, and our client's attorney to come up with resolve to some minor issues in terms of access and such. So they will be done very quickly. I think Jim will be at the, his attorney's doorstep in the morning, and then we can certainly make, provide to the town the foot candle requirements and show how it meets the foot candle requirements for the town ordinance.
Yeah, I'm not sure if we discussed last time, we were trying to keep to 3,000 Kelvin for temperature because some of those things look like the sun.
Exactly.
You get up at 5,000 or above, so.
You're exactly right, Chair.
All right. Thanks. This is Kristen's project, so.
Okay, so I think you did a pretty good job summarizing about four years plus of time. The application, just for some of the board members' benefit, I think a couple of you might be new, or I don't know, I would just like to go over, it is a mixed use. There will be residences. There is parking on both the Main Street side of the building and along Wood Cliff Avenue. So, you know, we did go through a full Seeker review previously, and again, because the application, because of the time lapse, we thought it would be beneficial to get it back before the planning board in a full way. It had already received all the time extensions it could have received for our town code, and it was on at that time for a public hearing, special use permit, site plan review, architectural review, and again, all of those things were checked off. We met in May for a pre-construction meeting, and there are some items that still need to be addressed before we can move forward, but you have about 10 days to get that. Get to that, but, and as was alluded to, staff met with the town board council because of the parking that's proposed on Wood Cliff Avenue, there was an agreement that was filed a few years, or a couple of years ago now, back in 2020. Because of the time, again, that has lapsed, given that we have a new highway superintendent, there were some, maybe some missing details in the agreement, we just want to clean up the document itself. And in taking a look at that, there were a couple of items that were flagged by the town board council, so we'll just make sure that we get some of that confirmation in writing and get those items addressed as part of the record, and that'll be a part of the filed documentation that you were referencing. There was an additional note that came in subsequent to this revised recommendation going to the planning board, and it is in similar fashion, having to do with the town highway department not being responsible essentially for a third party having caused any damage in that 10-foot right of way along Wood Cliff Avenue, whether it's snow removal or ice or anything else. But I will get the technical legal jargon to you, so you can incorporate that before you finish drafting that legal form to be reviewed by town board council. This, just to confirm also for the planning board's benefit, it's not going back to the town board. They've already adopted the resolution.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure that the document itself is cleaned up. So again, this is on for a public hearing, so staff has prepared a recommendation, you know, pending board discussion for you to open a public hearing, close the public hearing, adopt Seeker, and adopt a conditional special use permit, conditional site plan resolution, and adopt a conditional architectural review. Or if the board so chooses, depending on if there were public comment or, you know, significant concerns, the board could open a public hearing, adjourn or defer action. But most of the items, as was mentioned, were being worked out, and so I think the applicant is well on their way. The only other comment I would make is, there was some conversation earlier this week among staff, we wanted some clarification about potential blasting on site. It was discussed previously as a concern, and I just thought it'd be important to bring that up as part of the record.
Yep.
Because there was a, there was a study that was done, and I believe that that study, the conclusions were that no blasting would be taking place on site, and I guess I'm just looking for some confirmation on that because that would require a substantial management plan.
No, that's correct. There's no, absolutely no blasting on site. It's going to be, based on a study, it showed that a heavy-duty hammer should be sufficient to take that out.
And some ripper.
Ripper.
Yep. Thanks, Kristen. Yeah, they did provide a nice vibration report. That's great. So let's see if Bobby wants to weigh in on that as well.
Yeah, we have no comments. It's for the reapproval, you know, nothing's changed, so we have no new concerns.
All right, thank you. It is on for public hearings. I move the open a public hearing?
Second.
Moved in second, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Anyone on the Zoom call wish to comment on the Hafa project? We're in the room. And for those of you on a phone, it would be star six to unmute. Seeing none, I move we close the public hearing?
Second.
Moved in second, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, let's go around the board for comments. Start with Ben.
No. Kristen explained it earlier as well as these parking issues or whatever, just taking care of it.
Yep. All right. Peter?
I'm good. My only question is one of language. You know, we say the plan is identical to the one that was formally submitted. Have we done our due diligence to be absolutely certain that the plans have not changed in any way?
Yes. So much so that once again, I forgot about the lighting plan, which I know was reviewed in the very first iteration of this project's review, and somewhere got lost along the way, again.
I would say that was it. Nicole?
Yep. So there, because there will be hammering, I just want you to take note of chapter 139 of our town code, which states you cannot use heavy machinery before 7:00 AM during the week, and then I believe it's 10:00 AM during the weekend. Okay, so just be aware of that, because you do have those houses behind you. Okay?
No, I don't have any other comments.
Can I mention about cutting trees? How much, I mean, how many trees and how does that affect?
Yeah, the majority of the trees are like scrub brush and a few decent-sized trees, but the majority of them are in the back of the property of, what was it?
Wood Cliff Avenue.
Cliff Avenue.
Yeah.
Right way from Main Street.
Right, for the parking.
Yeah, it's right where the parking is going to be.
I mean, I see on the Google Maps, it's white wooded there, that area. So is the whole area is going to be cleared or so that he's going to be?
Yeah, pretty much the whole area. I think there's only, only green space and the parcel is all the way on the, all the way to the left.
Parking for all the apartment residents on the top there. Amath, the demolition plan actually shows the trees to be removed on there, so there's, it looks like maybe a dozen or so of trees, the rest, I think, is brush.
So is that?
The climate change is concerning to reduce their oxygen production in our area.
Oh, I have no comments.
All right.
Sorry, I must have been done.
Yep. My comments were only about the, I'm interested, looks like a new utility pole, like kind of in the, in front of the parcel there, is that something I have to move?
The plan is to relocate one of those poles.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good.
It's a Verizon pole.
Chair, can I just ask one other question?
Sure.
Regarding the hammering, how long is that expected to go on?
It all depends on how soft the rock is, but I don't see, foresee this happening more than a month.
A month, okay. You will be...
It could be a few weeks, it could be a month. It all depends on how hard, dense, and dense the rock is.
Okay, you will be notifying the people, not only behind you, but next door, I think that there's a restaurant next door there?
I'm sure we could, yes. We can do that. Notify them and let them know that we're hammering.
Depending on the vibration, I mean, they could have things falling all over the place.
If you look at the study we have with regards to the hammering, it's actually, the vibration is minimal as far as the spread.
But there's noise involved.
Yeah, there is going to be some noise, but the decibels are not too bad.
Okay.
And we'll be doing, within the town ordinance.
Right, right. But, right, okay. Just wanted to add that because I know that there's a business, I mean, this is a welcome addition there, but you know, there are businesses there already and besides the residential up there in the back, that the one right next door can really be affected.
Yeah, I mean, one of our biggest concerns last time, Rocco and Ben can agree to that, was the gas station next door and will it affect any of the gas lines?
Right, right, well, that also.
But their, their report here, you know, takes care of that issue.
Well, thank you for letting me speak up again.
So I think we're ready to move forward. As Rocco said, it'll be a nice addition to have three new stores and some apartments on that. First is the old garage, they collapsed in the snow, that's been a few years now.
Hopefully, we'll be the ones to start revitalizing that whole section, especially considering the fire down the street too.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah, it's been, and the new pizza beer place is close by, so it's coming along.
I move the planning board hereby determine that the Hafa Holdings LLC 819 Main Street reapproval would not have a significant adverse effect on the environment and that an environmental impact statement will not be required for the reasons set forth in the attached negative declaration, resolution dated March 16, 2023.
Second. Moved in second for Seeker, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional special use permit and conditional site plan approval for the Hafa Holdings LLC 819 Main Street reapproval as depicted on the plan set dated December 21, 2018 and last revised on February 27, 2023, subject to the following 1 through 10.
Second. Moved in second, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Do we want to look at architecture again?
I don't think so. I mean, we went, we went through a few rounds and updated our architecture last time. Does anybody want to see it again?
No.
All right.
Okay. I move the planning, no, okay. I move the planning board grant architectural review reapproval for the Hafa Holdings LLC 819 Main Street as depicted on the plan set for resubmission dated February 27, 2023.
Second. Moved in second for architecture, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. And you're gonna, do we need to, do you think you're going to turn around and have the plan signed before the end of March to do the trees?
They're going to load down this afternoon, so.
Okay.
Now we have to look.
Yes.
Or do we have to allow it? Okay. All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the board. Thank you, Kristen, Michael, and Eric. This is great because it's, you know, again, the timeline is short.
Yep.
And I want to thank you all for really working with us.
Absolutely.
Thanks for starting this project again, because it'll be a welcome addition to Main Street.
Yep.
All right, a few housekeeping items, some adjournments. For A Tucker Drive, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to April 20, 2023.
Second.
Moved in second, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. 76 Ireland Drive dish wireless, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to April 20, 2023.
Second.
Moved in second, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. BP4 Westley House, I move the planning board adjourn the public hearing to April 20, 2023.
Second.
Moved in second, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. That's it for adjournments. And at this time, I move that we allow public comment on other items on tonight's agenda, and please limit your comments to no more than three minutes, and we will consider them during the meeting, but not necessarily respond to them.
Second.
Moved in second, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Does anyone in the room or on the Zoom call wish to comment on any other items on tonight's agenda? Again, unmute with star six for the phone people and raise your hand or unmute with Zoom to speak. Seeing none, I move we resume the meeting?
Second.
Moved in second, called to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, welcome back to Vassar College.
Thank you. So we're just getting our technology hooked up here.
Yep.
But I want to thank you, Chairman Whitehead, Mr. Welty, members of the town planning board and the town planning department for reviewing our submission for Vassar's new admission and career education building. As you know from our materials, this is a project that proposes moving a couple of departments from the center of campus to the edge of the north side of campus where College View and Fairmont Avenue intersect. With this submission, we're looking to get, you know, to declare lead agency on the project and site plan review, and we're ready to resubmit in April, assuming we can make, and we are ready to do that quickly, make changes to the materials and be ready for an April resubmission. So, maybe you could just look at the next slide. Yeah. So as I mentioned, this is a project which relocates two existing departments from the center of campus to the north edge of campus. And we'll keep our comments tonight pretty brief. What we'd like to do is focus on updates to the site plan that have been made based on comments from the town and from the county. And Mary Ann Thompson will run through, she's our architect on the project, will run through the inspiration for the design of the site, which also informs the geometry of the building itself. And then Phil Greeley from Colliers Engineering will talk through the parking aspects of the project. And so with that, I'm going to turn it right over to Mary Ann and Ben.
All right, thank you.
Ben Myers is on the project with me. So the existing admissions office is tucked in the middle away from the edges, and it's, you can see it outlined in the, in the white dotted. It's kind of hard to find, it's outdated, and the idea is to take a site that's part of the campus that turns its back onto the town and create a new north gate. And we've showed most of you guys this before, but some of you haven't seen it. The idea that there's, where the tennis courts are, where College View is, that there's a kind of backdoor quality to the campus, and we'd like to fix that with the building. The site is dominated by tennis courts, which create a barrier to the town, and there's a lot of electrical equipment, there's big parking lots, and we'd like to kind of create a building and a new gate there that starts to activate the retail of the town and create a town-gown connection. You can see there's the parking lots, dumpsters, we're trying, going to try to fix all of that. And we've talked to you guys about this and taken a lot of your ideas, actually. Actually been really super helpful. In terms of the language of the building, we're... In terms of the language of the building, we're kind of inspired by the way that Vassar has a kind of almost collage of various languages that are, some of them are very important to the kind of canon of architecture in the United States. And we read this quote last time we saw you, we're not going to read it again because we're going to go more quickly. But just, you know, Breuer, Marcel Breuer, the Ferry House, part of a really important project in the canon of modernist architecture and also Saranen. Both of those, both of these projects create a kind of space around them, which is what we actually really love about Vassar. This idea that it's a series of courtyards that are created by the edges of the buildings. The buildings become kind of garden walls in a way and the courtyards are episodically linked and create a kind of unfolding spatial sequence and nestled into a garden landscape. It's such a beautiful campus and, you know, really that College View area is the one area that really is, kind of really feels really back of house. Unfortunately, it's right next to the town, so we're going to try to fix that. The, interestingly, the formal, very, very formal courtyards are right at the center and then the courtyards along the edge are much more lyrical and informal, but they still are really strong courtyards. You can see our project up there on College View, which is created by, I mean, the whole idea behind the project is to create a series of arms with the building that create held space, held outdoor space that becomes like outdoor living rooms. And so there's three courtyards. One is addressing College View and it's, we see it as like a place where the town can come and sit in Adirondack chairs and start to engage with the campus and the student, you know, kind of spontaneous encounter between the students and the members of the community. There's another courtyard which is addressing the parking lot, which because this is an admissions building, this will be the first experience that students get of Vassar. We want it to be welcoming and warm and open armed. And then there's the south facing courtyard, which is addressing the campus, which is where the tennis courts kind of used to be and now it's going to be a really amazing green lawn that will be actually another amenity for the town. When we first came to talk to you guys over a year ago, which was informal, it was just a few of you, we had a scheme that didn't have this kind of openness to College View and we really took the advice that we got from you to create that courtyard and I think it's a really strong project and really, really grateful for the advice. The other important thing that's happening is Fairmont is, right now has the jog to, you know, you bump right into the parking lot when you come down Fairmont, which is starting to get developed as a really nice retail sector of the town and that's going to be pulled straight through. So there's much more connection between the campus and Fairmont and the town in general. Another feedback that we got from you guys at our last meeting was to create these very strong connections, which the paths that we're creating are in yellow and to create those strong connections to the sidewalk, which we had actually not done. We had the connection, the pedestrian connection that comes through, from the campus through the building, was then going through that long grove of trees, if you'll recall. And now we have them coming out to the sidewalk, engaging the retail in a more quick and efficient way. And that was advice you guys had asked us, you know, had given us. So the idea is that the connectivity of the path, the pedestrian connection between the campus and the town is much, is much easier and smoother and you don't have to have all the barriers of the tennis courts and the electrical equipment. And it actually does go through the building, the paths do.
Can I just add one thing there? We also added a short connector that you can see from the roundabout at College Avenue, again, based on comments that we received from the town. So that's connecting from that roundabout directly to the existing path that takes you by the existing tennis courts, which will go away. So that path is new there as well.
Yeah.
And I don't know if you mentioned the moving of the electrical equipment?
Yeah.
I was just going to chime in. You'll also notice we moved the electrical equipment out of that main courtyard so that it's much more shielded off to the side and really opens up.
And that was something you guys had recommended at our last meeting.
Do you have a pointer that you could show the board where exactly it is now? Off to the side there, okay.
And you can see in the model where we ripped it out of the old location.
Yeah.
Some missing cords.
Saw a little.
In the next slide, you could, the electrical equipment's a little clearer. Going with the benches, I feel like that little white circle is really clear.
Yeah, that was a big plus, moving that equipment.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for pushing us on that. The other thing that we got from the notes was the idea of adding benches or marking the sidewalk, these pedestrian connections. And so you can see in the renderings we've done, since we got your notes, we're adding a bench and each time the path comes, you know, the pedestrian path starts to relate to College View. So there's, they're in orange, those two new benches marking the path and with some planting around them. And then the two yellow benches are new as well. Those are engaging the stone wall. So, and then the white benches are ones in the floor plan are the ones that exist.
Right.
So here's a really a good close up of moving, you know, how we move the electrical equipment, the large field for the community use, which creates a sense of openness and just a clearer diagram of the three courtyards. The building is a framing device for exterior space and gathering. The lobby, which is right at that hinge between the bars, is, has three doors, three entryways, one from the parking lot, one from College View and one from the campus. So it becomes an area of where we're thinking of kind of like a Panera with lots of furniture. People can meet each other, you know, you pass through the lobby, but it's also a place for meeting people and having encounter. It's very light and airy and warm and welcoming in its materiality. The town is, which is, we did a study of the buildings on College View to make sure that our project was going to be relating to them nicely. It's basically two and three story wood framed, residentially scaled buildings with some with storefront along the edge of the street. And our building has, we're starting at that scale of two stories along College View in its wood frame, so it has this kind of, almost like a residential feeling, which we were going for because we interviewed a lot of faculty and students and the idea of an admissions building being very warm and friendly, feeling not scary, kind of more residential felt was really appropriate and was the advice that we got. But you can see that it's two stories on the street and then it rises up in the auditorium, which then addresses the scale of the college buildings, the buildings on the site. We did a new series for you where you're coming upper left is coming, is from the rotary and you can see all that grove of trees and the building is very, is very hidden. And then as you, upper right, as you start to move down the sidewalk, you see it's nestled into the grove. The tall trees are the existing trees and the smaller trees are ones we'll be planting. And then you get opposite the building and you can read that it's a really pretty courtyard that becomes like a living room for, for the town. The language of the building, you guys asked about that in the notes. The idea is that it's transparent, it's open, it's welcoming, it's warm, it's natural materials. It makes you feel comfortable when you, when you engage it, it's not imposing and that it gives the students a kind of feeling of calm when they come in to have their admissions. They're going to be interviewed there for admissions and also for career development. So it's like people coming in to hire them. It's kind of a scary process, so the building is meant to be very warm and transparent and open and friendly. So there's the courtyard that's addressing College View. And now Phil and Ken are going to come and talk about the parking issues.
Thanks for the presentation.
Good evening. Philip Greeley from Colliers Engineering and Design. Our focus was traffic, parking, pedestrian circulation. Unlike many of the projects we're involved with, this is not a new traffic generator. It's really relocating, reassigning trips that are already coming to the campus. So from a traffic standpoint, we prepared a traffic analysis. We looked at existing traffic conditions on College View Avenue and at the north gate, at Fairmont Avenue and also at Fairmont and La Grange. So to get the patterns in terms of traffic and pedestrian movements. So that was looked at. With the proposed plan, we will be creating a four-way intersection at Fairmont, which right now is a three-way, all-way controlled intersection, will become a four-way control, all-way control, stop controlled intersection. The reconstruction of that intersection will redo some of the sidewalks there, new ADA curb ramps, aligning the east and west legs of that intersection. They're slightly offset today. There's other work along College View that will be done in terms of striping of parking spaces. The parking between Raymond Avenue and the new entrance opposite Fairmont is, it's not striped. It's just, you know, parallel parking. So we will be striping that to define and improve the efficiency of those spaces, the usage of those spaces. We have met with the highway superintendent to look at it in the field and, you know, some other modifications. So we'll be working through those, some drainage improvements, et cetera. Pavement resurfacing, restriping, replacement of signs. So those are some of the nuts and bolts, you know, externally to the project. In terms of traffic, you know, with the new entrance there, as I said, it'll be a four-way intersection, all-way stop controlled. There will be some reassignment, people will use that, that are currently using the north gate to get to the campus, will reassign to that intersection. In terms of traffic, there will be some traffic that will actually be taken off of Raymond Avenue or they'll, instead of continuing down Raymond to the main gate, will, you know, come on College View. But essentially, because of where the current admissions building is, there's limited parking there. So if you were going there today, there are some spaces. Some people do park in the north lot and actually walk to the center of campus. But overall, you know, this is not going to create really new traffic or new parking demands per se. The plans were developed to provide additional parking, to redefine, to improve the parking access. As part of this plan, just to kind of bring it into the whole picture, near the Gordon Commons area, we're actually reworking that lot and we're increasing some of the parking spaces and improving the circulation pattern. That's an area that's a little congested in terms of movements there. Some people that use Gordon Commons park in the north lot. This will make it more convenient for them, for Gordon and for Neuer's. In terms of the plan, immediately adjacent to the admissions building, there are possibly 15 parking spaces that are assigned or dedicated to that. But we also have interconnection to the main north lot, which is being reconstructed. The area behind Jewett House is being redefined and cleaned up and actually we're adding some parking spaces there. Based on some of the comments we received, we're actually adding a few more spaces, two more spaces where the dumpster, garbage refuge areas will be picked up. And then the plan also provides accommodations for future parking. As we say, we don't think we need additional parking. We are proposing 35 land bank parking spaces. Those spaces would be to the east of Jewett House and would be an area that would be also in the interim used as the fire emergency access connection to that building. We have met, Ken's office has met with the fire department to make sure of that assignment. If and when the land bank spaces, if they were ever needed, that would also serve as that access point to the Jewett House from that side. In terms of some other past requirements, as part of the In-N-Out Institute project, in the field area where we're talking about this building going, there was a area that was identified for event overflow parking for the In-N-Out Institute. We had 156 spaces earmarked in the field area, which will be grassed area for this complex. We can accommodate those and we've shown that on the plan if and when those events need that additional parking. So in overall, you know, for the admissions building, we don't see a new demand for parking per se. It's, we've taken the opportunity to clean up some of the areas, better define, more landscaping and to provide for an area that if we do need spaces, that they can be built in that area. So I think that's just kind of a quick synopsis. We had put in a summary in our February 16th submission. We did receive some written comments from JMC, your traffic consultant. We are going to be responding to those. They were pretty straightforward, a lot of detailed comments on the plans in terms of signing, striping, and they had asked us to include the intersection of La Grange Avenue and Fairmont, which we already had the data and we will provide that. And also to look at a design year beyond 2023. We want to get going quickly, but, you know, we may be a year out, so. I think that was pretty, pretty much the synopsis of what's there and pretty straightforward from our standpoint. We will be getting a permit from New York State DOT. Mary Ann had mentioned the connection to the roundabout, the sidewalk connection. So there's a section of probably five feet of sidewalk that's within the right of way. So the DOT, New York State right of way is pretty much coincident with the stone wall there. And from the existing sidewalk on the east side of the roundabout to that stone wall, that area is about a less than five foot section that's in the state right of way. We have discussed it with them, so, but we will be obtaining a permit for that connection and that'll have complete pedestrian connectivity in that area. So I think that's pretty much a brief synopsis of everything that's been incorporated into the plans. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Phil.
And then just to finish things off, we have a short fly through updated based on the board's comments last time.
Sounds good. I appreciate you bringing the model again. A couple of board members were not here last time.
Yes.
Good way to visualize it as well.
Models say a thousand words. Can everybody see this stuff on the screen?
Yep, we've got it.
So that is the view from Fairmont. And you're coming into the parking area, the building to your right, the cherry alais that leads to the door for the new students coming in, parking area. And then you can see how the building rises up towards the campus, changes the scale. That's the auditorium where, like, you know, where your, the college is presented in that room to the new students, potential new students. The south facing area to the left, courtyard to the left. There's a big investment that's going into plantings, continuing the idea of Vassar as a kind of arboretum, garden, building in a garden. We had a, a lot of the students that we interviewed wanted places to go debrief after they were interviewed. And so part of that is that exterior shaded area with chairs in there. Now we're walking down College View and looking at the courtyard. That's the open arms to the street, to the retail, Adirondack chairs. We moved the electrical equipment to the, out of that courtyard. There's the new connection with the path.
There's no benches responding to that.
To the notes that we got from you guys. And you can see how transparent the building is. You're looking through the building to the campus. Creating a hinge between the town and the campus. And now here's the field that we're imagining will be very popular with the town. Big enough for Frisbee. Going out, this is the path now to the gate that's at the Rotary at Juliet. Going out, this is the path now to the gate that's at the Rotary at Juliet. Beautiful existing grove of trees.
Great that those trees are all kept.
Yeah.
This is the existing path now that takes you towards the.
Towards the other Rotary, yeah. Where you, where you had asked us to put the connecting path. Walking through the grass where there can be a lot of picnicking happening. The building is passive solar, so it has a lot of south-facing windows with overhangs. Super insulated, triple-glazed windows.
And then just working our way back to me.
And the new, the new North Gate.
All right, thank you. Nice way to visualize it. All right. Any comments around Mary Ann?
Yeah, I, the layout worked pretty well. We just need a little bit more detail on the topography, some more spot elevations. The area is relatively flat, so we just want to make sure that the drainage design accounts for collection of all stormwater and, you know, treats it all. As was mentioned, Andy from my office did meet out in the field with Ken and Phil and the Highway Super, Mike Simon, and kind of went over that intersection and improvements. And it's going to require some coordination, but it'll definitely be a good improvement. There's some utility poles running along College View there that go through the existing parking that will need to be looked at. And there's existing drainage on the street that we'll have to make sure, however the proposed layout ends up, that we're utilizing that drainage system and not cutting anything off. So I would say our main concerns are pretty much just drainage because it is relatively flat. Yeah, that's probably about it.
Thanks, Bob.
No problem.
Let's go around the board for.
We have Mark.
Oh yeah, Mark's on, right. Yeah, respond to Phil's, Phil's comments and such.
Yes, hello. Yes, we did do a review on this project and I believe Phil from Colliers took it upon himself to address some of my comments that I already had, but I'm going to sorry, restate them, some of them. But we did ask for some, you know, backup data on the LaGrange Avenue intersection as it was stated that it was counted. Did ask for an additional, you know, looking at a further design year, as Phil had mentioned, with regards to the traffic analysis. Just due to the length of time on the project anticipated for that, also some general growth. We also did ask the applicant to just be a little more specific on what the existing academic, sorry, admissions building is going to be repurposed as far as, it says it's going to be repurposed for other academic needs. Just, you know, what are some of those examples of what that repurposing is? Would it generate additional traffic that we need to account for? As well as the, you know, the proposed admissions building is, you know, much larger than the existing admissions building. Is that going to be as a result of maybe additional staff needed that maybe isn't incorporated in the relocation of some of the staff? You know, some of those questions should just be answered and clarified by the applicant. There was some, the parking was looked at as well. And as Phil had mentioned, they, we had it in our comments about making sure that the Vassar and an Institute overflow parking was considered. And I know Phil had presented that just a few minutes ago. That was basically the majority of our traffic comments. We did review the site plans. We just want to make sure obviously sightlines for, you know, internal intersections are clear as far as maintaining visibility at intersections for vehicles to make the proper maneuvers and seeing each other. And I believe Mr. Greeley also mentioned about picking up two additional spaces. The plans mentioned about being short by two spaces. So maybe that will just be, you know, the ability to maintain what's needed there and not seeking a variance. We did bring into a comment on the site plans. There's two dead-end parking lot areas and we just, as a general practice, we typically look for some kind of turnaround space for someone goes into those dead-end spaces and there's all the parking spaces are full, you know, some kind of turnaround space for cars to, you know, see that they're full to make a turnaround to go out. So we just made a comment on that about potentially striping a space at the end. That would also have to be signed for no parking, but you know, something to consider. We also mentioned to just have the team look at some of the pedestrian crossing signage. There may be some clarifications and, on some of the arrow markings as far as the signs. You know, all-way sign placard on this always stop, providing transversible or mountable curbing for fire truck access where they're proposing to go over the curb, as well as some other fire truck turning comments that we had. A lot of the other stuff on there were pretty just, you know, detail-oriented, not major comments on the site plans.
Yeah, some difficult comments on signs and crosswalks and whatnot, so. Sounds good. Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome.
All right, let's proceed around the board for comments. Start with Peter this time again.
I only have one concern and it's something that Mr. Greeley, I'm sure, will address before our next meeting. That is JMC's comments on traffic and parking B2 and B5, both which address the four-way at Fairmont and College View. That's all I have.
All right, thanks Peter. Ben?
Mark answered any comments I had, which was mainly about the old space for the administration building. So I don't really have anything except is there going to be a bar in there?
This is true too. But did you, I mean, as Ben alluded to, do you have any comments on, on the use of the old administration?
Yeah, I mean, right now our thinking is that it will allow those, there's actually two spaces. There's the old admission building and then there's where career education is in Main Building. And admission is actually also split between Cow's House, that small house, and Main Building. So they, they spread across those two buildings. So this allows us to collect both departments in one location. So how will we use those spaces? It'll provide us an opportunity to decongest some of the existing departments that are already in the center of campus. You know, there's some, some departments that are kind of up against the, the, you know, they're budding up against the walls and we need to decongest a little. Yeah, and it'll also allow us to move potentially a department into one of those spaces while their space is being renovated. So we can do some shifting around through, you know, swing space and that kind of thing.
Okay, so as Mark alluded to, it's not, not a big.
Nothing new, it's just moving around what we already have on campus. Yep, yep. And there was also a question about the size of the building, bigger than the current footprint of admission and career education. And the main reason for that is that we're providing lobby space as well as this large double-height info session space, the event space. So right now neither admission or career education have a dedicated space for them to hold, you know, the info sessions that the students come to when they're first visiting the college or where employers might come and, and do a session for a large group of students. So this allows them to do it in their building rather than have to fight with other departments on campus for that kind of space. So that's the, those are the two major reasons for the increase in square footage is that the lobby sort of common space to make it welcoming and then an info session, event space.
It's going to be much nicer. When I brought my niece there a few years ago to look at Vassar, it was, it was tough to find the admissions building. And I was somewhat familiar with Main Building already. All right, Nicole?
Are you removing any trees at all or no?
Are we, pardon me?
Are you removing any trees at all?
Any students?
Trees.
Oh, trees.
We are, we are removing some, but they were the ones that, in the parking area, in the new parking area. They are not healthy trees.
Okay. Yeah, and we are replacing, you know, certainly we have a campus policy to replace when we remove, so.
Yeah, I may have presented a master landscape plan a few years back.
Yeah.
Maybe 10 years now, I don't know.
The priority was to keep the beautiful big trees that are there. Thank you.
Yeah, I've got a couple of comments, one pretty minor. If I'm not mistaken, there's a bus stop right there where the new intersection is going to be. I assume there's been some thought that, that that should not present a problem.
Right, right, yep.
In the future, because I would think there might be increased usage for the bus and they may add more stops.
Yeah, we've thought of, we've thought of that, the intersection.
Okay, there is no issue. All right, regarding the build and the sustainability aspects, are you going to do any thermal like you're doing at the inn?
We're not doing, we're not doing geothermal, but we are doing an all-electric building. And so it's going to be basically air source heat pump rather than geothermal or ground source heat pump. So it's all electric. It's also, as Mary Ann mentioned, you know, very well insulated, triple-pane glass and that sort of thing, using a lot of what are known as passive house features. So air circulation, fans to keep the comfort level, you know, appropriate so that you don't have to turn your AC on. Each office will have an operable window, you know, those kinds of things. And then materials that are really sustainable, so a lot of wood. You know, carbon sequestration is important and wood's a good product to do that, so.
So I heard solar mentioned, but that's just passive like sort of windows, no solar panels?
We also have solar designed for the roof. I should have.
Oh, you do, okay. All right, that's good. And then regarding the parking, I've, I've asked in the past, I think Vassar is working on, on a campus-wide EV structure? Right, so I didn't see any EV stations. I assumed that now in the, as you go through redoing these parking lots, now would be the time to put the infrastructure in there?
10 in the plan right now for adding, in this location, we'll be adding 10, 10, you know, ports, 10 different places where you can hook up your car. Yeah, we do have a campus-wide plan to increase the number of EV stations up to about 34 over two and a half or three years, so.
And when would that start?
Well, we've started it, we've started it with the new faculty housing project.
Oh, you did, okay, because last time I asked, it was, it was kind of up in the air. Okay, you have a plan there, great. Okay, and the other thing, and don't throw anything at me. I thought I read that you might be considering allowing some patrons to park there in the parking lot?
Yeah.
And have you given much thought to that and how would that work?
Yeah, I mean, I think the details of how that would work need to be worked out with the local businesses, with the Arlington, you know, the bid and so forth. And so we are ready to do that as soon as, you know, we're, we have approval to move forward and they want to have the conversations with it. So we've proposed it to them and they're really excited by that opportunity. You know, we'd have to figure out the details and the logistics, but what it, what we think it will look like is, you know, evening parking in the lot as well as weekends and then times when the campus is, is closed, so. And then we'd have to work out, you know, when we have large events going on, just making sure that there's open communication and conversation with the Business Improvement District or Arlington, you know, businesses.
Signage and stuff would come out and say, you know, we got an event weekend or whatever.
Yeah, if it's an event weekend, we'd say, sorry, you know.
Yep, that happens.
All right, thank you. I mean, it looks good so far.
Appreciate you doing that, opening it up to help.
Yes, very much so.
Well, we really do see the project as, you know, obviously we want something that benefits the college, but if the town doesn't, we like to benefit the town as well because the two go hand in hand. And one way that students make a decision about where to go to college is based on the local community and whether that's welcoming and inviting. And I think this is, you know, good for the college from that perspective and at the same time it also benefits the town by bringing in close by patrons and things like that, so.
All right, thanks.
Yeah, I think it's a very welcome addition to the community. It's beautiful from that side.
Thank you.
And some of the concerns that were mentioned, the parking, because right now that area is, because of the business around, it's very trafficky and Raymond Circle around College View, sometimes you have to wait in telephone. So I think the management of that traffic would be necessary. But it's a good addition.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, and John?
I have no questions, just agree, it's a very attractive building and I think it will be good for the community. Thank you.
And I think most of my comments have been discussed already. Sharing, it'd be nice to have electricity underground and those old poles, but that's a, that's a tough thing to coordinate with Central Hudson. Is there, is there a certain lead certification you're looking for with this building or just?
No, we're, we're. Yeah, we're not looking for, you know, particular certification, but we definitely, you know, we work towards those standards. It just doesn't seem like it's, it's really worth the checkbox, shall we say.
Yeah, that's like farms that are organic, but don't want to go through the certification process. All right, and last question I had was what, you know, how's that screening of the new substation? Or, you know, how's that look? Is that on the fence?
Yeah, I'll let, I'll let Mary Ann and Ben talk a little bit about the screening.
Some kind of natural?
We're thinking it will be made out of wooden slats that have a tiny space between them for ventilation, but that would also have vines growing on them on the outside. So it feels kind of like a beautiful fence goes in keeping with the building and the language of the building, out of the material that the building would be made out of.
It's a morning glory, it's going up the side. All right.
Just to interrupt for two seconds, I'm grabbing this on, I'm talking to the mic. The, there's two different things here. There's an electrical project that's moving the substation that's irrelevant of the admissions building. So that's been in process to go for a couple of years. That is going to move the substation to behind what is the existing dumpster behind Jewett. There was a question in the plan, what is the gray area in behind that dumpster? So that is the electrical substation that's being moved to that location with the switchgear and working with Central Hudson. And we're, we're getting closer and closer to actually getting that project underway. Lead times for this equipment is so far out, it's incredible compared to what it was. The station that's up here is the HVAC that is for the building. That's what's being screened here, not the substation itself. That equipment is in, in the location over there. So I just wanted to be clear on the two to make sure.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. All right, I think we're ready for lead agency.
I move the planning board to declare its intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as a type-one action, authorize the planning department's circulation of a notice of said intent, a copy of the AF and a copy of the application to the identified involved and interested agencies.
Second. Moved in seconded for lead agency, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board for further action on this application pending establishment of lead agency. Direct the applicant to respond to comments and writing of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, included but not limited to the following, one through 18.
Second. Moved in seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes seven to zero. All right, thanks for coming back and making those changes to the plans. Looking good and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd rather, I'd rather you pick it up tomorrow, yeah. Good, that'll give, that'll give some of the planning board members a chance to look at it after the meeting as well, if you can do that. Thanks. Oh, that's fine, yeah, yeah. Our next up is Ferrari and Son's office on Van Wyckner Road. Let's see, are you in the building or on Zoom? Who's representing them?
Hello, this is Tony Ferrari on the line.
Hey, Tony, okay, you're on the phone, all right.
How are you?
All right, go ahead with your.
I, I'm sorry, I thought that Maury Associates was going to be there tonight. I'm not in town, I'm, I'm in Florida right now. So I guess we're here to review the placement of the river rock on the site where prior approval of the proposed grass was. And I'd like to utilize the river rock for several reasons. It's a natural product that provides good drainage. It's got good runoff stabilization and along with the fabric weed block will provide low maintenance for us. And along with the fabric weed block will provide low maintenance for us at the site. And I think it looks good, too.
Yeah, to take a drive out there. Okay, thanks. Let's go around the board for some comments first. Or, oh, sorry, Kristin. Getting ahead of myself.
So, thank you, Tony. Yeah, so basically the application was approved with a grass area. The applicant had, you know, gone on, the building looks great, the parking looks great. This was just one item that, you know, it was a request by the applicant to place this as a field change request. We had denied it and they still wanted to pursue this. It is currently in place. So it really just kind of left us and kind of stuck between a hot, a rock and a hot place. So, wow. Yep, and so we just needed to, we requested the applicant, Tony, to come back to the planning board and just kind of have that conversation with you. But essentially, everything else remains the same. It's a type-two action for seeker purposes because of the limited nature and scope of this amended site plan. We have provided you with a wave, a motion to waive the public hearing. And if the planning board was okay with it, you could adopt an amended site plan approval to include the river rock.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I recall, I mean, it's kind of grass in that whole area around here, but it's right at the end of Tucker Drive there, I think. All right, let's just go around the board for comments then. I'll start with Joan.
I don't have any comments. I don't, not opposed to change.
All right.
See, I have no comment.
Nicole?
Yep, just one quick comment, actually. It's a note from the water department that the backflow prevention is due. If you could have that certification done and then submit it to the water department, that'd be great.
Yeah, that's already been done for this year, so I sent a copy to Maury Associates.
Okay.
He should be getting that over to you. Yeah, that was done February 17th.
Okay, great.
All right, thanks. And Ben?
Nothing.
And Peter?
Looks great.
Yeah, just a comment here, you did a nice job fixing up the building and the parking there and everything. And the.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You do have, you know, there is a grass strip swale along the road edge and then you have the rocks, so. Looks good. There's a couple of spots where the plow might have hit it and tore up the fabric a little bit. But I'm sure you'll fix that. And the north area.
Absolutely.
The north area there is missing some of the river rock still, but.
Yes, because I didn't want to go any further until we got this resolved. I wanted to make sure we were okay.
Okay, sounds like the plan then. All right, I think we're good with it, so. I move that the planning board waive the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board determine the proposal meets the criteria of seeker type-two action pursuant to seeker part 617.5C9, requiring no further environmental review.
Second.
Moved in seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional amended site plan approval for Ferrari and Son's office, 195 Van Wagenen Road, subject to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies. And said response to be reviewed by the planning department. Ask adequacy and completeness inclusive but not limited to the following 1 through 9.
Second.
Moved in seconded, call to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, thanks for coming in. You're good to go.
Thank you.
All right, enjoy the Florida, it's wearing the snow here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Thanks, bye.
Okay, next up is 18 Creek Road.
This is Dean McGee of McCabe Coleman. Can members of the board hear me?
Well, can you speak up a little louder? It's a little bit muted.
Yes.
Oh, there we go.
Sure.
That's better.
That's good. My name is Dean McGee. I'm with the law firm of McCabe, Coleman, Ventosa, and Patterson on behalf of the applicant, Scott Bryant, who should be there with you in person. So good evening to the chair and members of the board. Before getting to substantive issues, I wanted to offer a correction to paragraph nine and 11 of the findings of fact. This correction was just suggested by my client. Paragraph nine states that the applicant is proposing five uses on the parcel, one office use, and four contractors' equipment storage spaces. Paragraph 11 reiterates some of this. Mr. Bryant just wants to clarify that in his proposal, there were five spaces, two of which have offices. So I don't believe this has any substantive impact on your analysis, but of course, I want to ensure that my client and the board and the building department are all on the same page. So I'll wait to see if there are any questions on that, or I'm happy to turn to the more substantive issues before the board.
Okay, thanks, that's good.
So, Mr. McCabe, just to clarify, so there, or Mr. Bryant, since you're here, there are two office spaces and then three contractors?
No, no, no.
Or is one of them a dual?
Within the spaces, there are offices.
There's a couple of offices.
So it's a total of five spaces, three up, two down. Two of the upstairs spaces, larger spaces, within them have offices.
Are they also?
And the storage?
Yeah.
Okay.
In other words, if you take a room this big and in the corner you had an office, that's what we're looking at.
Yep. So it's really five contractors' storage spaces, two of them have offices. Correct.
Okay, thank you. Oh, okay.
That's what it sounded like, yep.
Yep.
Turning to more substantive issues, I first really do want to thank the board for the thoughtful consideration it's already given to this request, along with the invaluable assistance of Lisa Cobb and Rachel Peter. And I trust that the board has received my March 3rd, 2023 letter with attached photographs. It's not my intent to restate everything that was in that letter. And when I was last here with Mr. Bryant in December, I got the sense that the board was being cautious about issuing a site plan waiver, given the relative rarity of that request. The draft resolution that's been sent to us in advance of this meeting really shows to me the significant consideration that's gone into that issue. It shows that the board recognizes that this is one of the circumstances where section 210-150E1 applies, so I won't retread that analysis. But, you know, as I mentioned in my March 3rd letter, we are requesting that the board amend the proposed resolution by striking paragraph three on page two of the resolution. And that's the paragraph that says, quote, "The uses shall be interior to the building only. Any proposed exterior storage of any kind, including but not limited to machinery, materials, or vehicles, shall require site plan approval by the planning board." So the resolution's analysis acknowledges that this area is zoned heavy industrial and that the waiver and the approval being sought is for a contractor's equipment storage slash contractor's yard. And that explicitly does permit outdoor storage. And respectfully, in my view, our hope was that that would end the analysis. You know, the waiver is being sought for a contractor. I'm sorry, I missed that.
That was somebody, I believe, on the Zoom who I am now muting, so you should be fine, I'm sorry. Yep?
So, you know, respectfully, it was our hope that that would end the analysis. The waiver is being sought for a contractor's storage yard. And it would almost seem, almost seem to be an oxymoron to have a contractor's storage yard that doesn't allow any storage in the yard. But, you know, I do want to just go through some of the additional context surrounding this request, which we believe in particular justifies a waiver without that restriction. And so if I can just briefly take you through those issues. The first, I would call the very sympathetic circumstances that brought Mr. Bryant before you today even making the request. And as I tried to emphasize in my March 3rd letter and the last time I was before you, Mr. Bryant owns a neighboring parcel and has long witnessed the use which he's continuing, asking to continue here. But before buying it, he did his proper due diligence and he ordered a municipal search to ensure that the site was in compliance with the town. Municipal search came back clean, he relied on it, his lender relied on it, everyone relied on it. But as soon as he tried to get a permit to conduct his work, he was hit with violations. And since that time, he has made all efforts to get into compliance. And in fact, he's here today as sort of part of a necessary prerequisite to getting the building permits he needs to continue, you know, his business with the building. So put simply, allowing this waiver, it's a critical piece of his ongoing efforts to resolve these issues, which were not of his own creation. And I'll add that a FOIL request later revealed more than a dozen violations were issued on this site between 2008 and 2013. And none of those owners tried to remedy them, from what I've seen. And Mr. Bryant is here doing his best to respect the town and respect the board. And it's also my understanding that the idea of designating this site or that this site fit into the definition of a contractor's storage yard actually came from a representative of the town. And Mr. Bryant at the time thought that that would, of course, include the continued use of outdoor storage. You know, it would harm him economically if he needs to kick out tenants or prohibit tenants of the indoor space from being able to use any of the outdoor space. That's one issue, I think, are the sympathetic circumstances. Two, a waiver permitting outdoors, you know, permitting outdoor storage would be consistent with the use of Mr. Bryant's neighbors, many of which appear to be heavily utilizing outdoor storage, even without site plan approval, far in excess of the continued use that he's seeking to do here. And I tried to include those pictures in my March 3rd letter. Again, I'm hoping the board received it. I have that letter with me. I could share my screen at the end of my presentation to show those pictures if any of you don't have it. And lastly, the outdoor storage permission sought by Mr. Bryant just doesn't raise, we believe, does not raise the environmental concerns which seem to be central to the board's analysis. And while I already shared in my letter pictures of some neighboring sites, I kind of regret not including in my letter pictures of the current site. So I'd like to share my screen just to show with you briefly three photographs of Mr. Bryant's property to give the board a better sense of what it is we're actually requesting here.
All right, go ahead.
Give me a moment to go through.
I know it's definitely cleaned up from the first time I've seen it. A bit.
I took over 500 tires out of there.
Wow.
Wow.
500 tires.
And what do you do with those 500 tires?
Fortunately, I have to make many phone calls. Is it Alco, the scrapyard?
Okay.
Right down the street, they take tires. Five dollars a piece.
So I believe the board should now be able, sorry, Scott, go ahead.
I was just talking about the tires I took out of there and scrap and all kinds of junk, yeah.
Yeah, I was saying, it looks a lot cleaner than it was a while back.
So this, I think this picture, and again, I only have, I only have two pictures and then an aerial shot from the county's website. This picture, I think, really highlights our request and why I think it should be considered by the board. You know, we're looking here at Mr. Bryant's site and we see three construction vehicles, which I think are completely consistent with the designation, both heavy industrial zoning and was a contractor's storage yard. So we see the excavator, we see the backhoe, we see the front loader. And in the back, we see a neighboring site with the school buses, which uses significant outdoor storage, far more significant than what we're seeking here. But I do think this picture is helpful. I will share the next one. I think I can figure out how to do so. This photograph is another angle of the site. So Mr. Bryant's building to the left, the kind of whitish building. And if you move across to the right on the parking lot, you should see a couple of trailers. It's my understanding, for example, at least one of those trailers is used by a landscaper who's currently a tenant. And if I'm making a wrong statement, Scott, please correct me. And again, you know, we believe that is consistent with the contractor's storage yard. You know, contractors sometimes need trailers for tools. And so we want the trailer to be able to be parked on the site. The last photograph I plan to share is an aerial photograph. I believe this one is from 2004 as depicted from the county's website, which has historical aerial, you know, views of properties. I think you see, you know, it's helpful in showing how outdoor storage has been in continued use on this site. But I also hope the contrast between the photographs I just sent you and the kind of sloppy mess you're looking at here just shows that, you know, Mr. Bryant's goodwill in trying to keep the site nice and neat but still using it as he should be allowed to as a contractor's storage. So, and of course, I talked about the environmental concerns. Scott said he would, of course, agree to language saying no hazardous or toxic materials could be. So to summarize our request again, we would ask the board to please introduce an amendment to the resolution striking paragraph three on page two of the resolution and striking the first paragraph of section two of the analysis, beginning on page six, with the heading "Other Considerations." Those are the two sections where, where, you know, the draft expresses that it does not intend to allow outdoor storage. So thank you all for your time. I'll answer any questions I can. But Mr. Bryant obviously has more details on the facts and he's there to answer your questions as well, so again.
All right, thanks for your presentation. Let's see, who looked at this one? Yeah, well, Lisa and I primarily. Yeah, I went to go to Lisa's. I mean, the only two things I would just say, no one, no one at the town has said that the use of outdoor storage could not proceed. That's clearly a permitted use in the district. The question is whether it requires site plan, which it does. It was the only, the prior CO for this building, remember the last time we spoke about it, was for manufacturing use. So it does require site plan, but certainly with a site plan, the use is permissible. That information was shared with Mr. Bryant last summer when we first met on this. And we certainly could have proceeded with the site plan. The only other thing is, and as some boards are aware, that the neighboring property is before this board for site plan review. It's been quite some time because there's a lot of legal issues currently being worked out related to the access to the Fitchett site, right? The bus yard. But there is an active site plan application for that project. One of the other, you know, we definitely have some older industrial sites that are not, you know, in compliance with current code. One of the other ones that was submitted by the Bryant, Mr. Bryant's attorney, is the one over on Superior Way, which is kind of where Pendle Road and Violet Avenue come together.
Built the walls there.
Yeah, and that is, that is a problem area. It actually, I believe the previous owner passed away. I think it might be his son that's currently looking to legalize some of those sites. We've met with their engineer and they are working on a site plan. So they would like to bring that site into conformance. We're not there yet, obviously, but they are aware that that needs to happen. Just want to bring those facts to your attention. That's the only other issues I would have. Lisa, I don't know if you have anything to add. Nothing more, okay.
I mean, unless the board has questions, I, you know. The standard for a site plan waiver is set forth in your, in the resolution. The, at the last meeting, the board asked me to draft a resolution and the board expressed concern about the outdoor storage on the property. So that's the draft resolution you have in front of you. You are certainly free to, you know, condition or not condition the waiver as the board sees fit. But because the waiver, it doesn't, it has the criteria that are in the code that the board must consider, but there are other, the site plan criteria that the board can consider. So, you know, it's, there's an awful lot of board discretion with this application for a waiver.
All right, thanks, Lisa. I guess we'll go around the board members and see what they think for comment. Start with Ben. You think?
Me?
Are you leaning towards a waiver or site?
[laughing]
Still looking at the, yeah, site plan or waiver, you think?
From what I've heard, as long as it's not in any violation, we could waive the site plan. What I even heard here.
So, Ben, the question before the board, the applicant is asking, you have a draft resolution in front of you that includes a prohibition on outdoor storage. And the applicant is asking that before the board adopts that resolution, they delete the provision that prohibits outdoor storage, and that would allow the applicant to use this in the typical way that a contractor yard would be used.
And I don't, I don't want to, I hate to correct the attorney, but it's not that it would prohibit outdoor storage. It would require that a site plan be approved by the planning board before outdoor storage were to be allowed. It's not prohibited.
Correct, sorry.
That's the way the resolution is currently written.
That's the way it's written currently.
Okay. Peter, your thoughts on this?
I am, I guess fundamentally opposed to the concept of waiver. Either you need a site plan, or you don't. I don't, I don't understand how there can be a middle ground. I mean, if it's important, and we've had several meetings, I mean, and I'm not really certain if you really even need a waiver. I mean, it's really not clear to me. But in terms of providing a waiver for a condition where it's not even required, A, or B, providing a waiver at all, it's very difficult for me to get my arms around. I mean, I honestly, fundamentally, do not think that waivers are a good idea. Either you need to have a site plan, or you don't.
Yeah, I can't think of an instance where we have waived a site plan.
Never. It's unprecedented.
So, he purchased the property, and it was zoned as it is now, is that correct?
Heavy industrial.
And the use that he thought it was, and the use that it is now, requires, he can use it as a storage yard, he can have exterior storage with site plan approval?
Yes.
And is he asking for the waiver because the violations were not picked up in the municipal report?
That is part of it. So, let me just kind of go back.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're he, so I apologize.
Kind of, kind of, kind of almost to the, to the beginning here. So, when there was a meeting at the town after I purchased the property, and after I was told I had to go to plan, I couldn't get permits, okay, because I filed for my permits. I was told I had to go to plan, meet with Mr. Welty, my attorney, town's attorney, I think, Mr. Nelson. And we tried, you know, talking through this and explain. The municipal searches were clean, actually had two of them, no violations identified, even though through FOIL, there's a laundry list of violations. And we proposed a plan at that time. And that plan was, let me correct, whatever violations exist, let me get my permits, give me temporary COs, whatever you got to give me. Let me rent this building out like I had been renting before I bought it. I'll get into that in a minute. But it had been rented all these years, all, all the units. And by the end of the year, by the end of the year, I would submit a site plan for the site. And I had also explained that I bought this property with the intent of not just what's there now, but to expand upon it. I do own a storage place, you know, right next door. So, that's why I bought this property, to expand upon it. So, I said, give me six months, I get the site plan in, let me, let me operate. I got bills to pay, I got a mortgage to pay. And the result of that was, no, you have to get a site plan. Okay? I couldn't get any kind of relief at that stage. So, through continuous communication between attorneys, okay, trying to get permits, and there's a, there's a long history, I'm not going to bore everybody, but basically through that, and starting to read the code about getting the permits, why can't I get the permit to put a door in, why can't I get a permit to put the window in, these things, I have a consultant, Z3 consultant, who's working with me, reading the code, we actually came across this provision, okay, we didn't write the provision, but the provision is in your town code, that says that if you meet this certain criteria, you could actually get a waiver. I wish I knew that back in June, but I didn't, okay? I found that out as I was continuing to do research about the building permits, okay? And that's kind of why I'm here now, okay, to get this waiver. Because if you look at what the conditions are, okay, I meet them, okay? And it was proposed that I go with a contractor's yard, and I said, fine, I'm good, we can end this thing right now, give me the contractor's yard approval. And what's tripping us up right now is the outdoor storage, okay, which is customary, it's permitted by code, and it's all around now, and heavy industrial. And I feel like, why am I being singled out? In all these years that the town has had problems with that building, okay, I'm the first person to come forward and say, give me permits, and let me get this place cleaned up. I'm the first person to come forward, okay? I cleaned the property next to me, I made that irritable, okay? It was nothing before I bought it, probably still be nothing today, and I want to do the same thing with this property. But right now, I'm, you know, I'm just at a point where I don't have my rental income coming in. I can't borrow more money to even do more work to this thing, even if I did get a site plan approved, because I don't have the income, okay? The building's half-empty. And we're here today to try to move this thing forward. I mean, the attorney will tell you, we have things in place that hopefully gets resolved here. If it doesn't get resolved here, there are other means we have, okay? So, but that's why we're here, I mean, earnest, to try to just get this waiver, let me get myself square. I've lost almost a year, okay? And, and we move forward from there, because ultimately, I would like to further develop this property. But there's a cost associated with that, making applications to the planning board, you know, it's not a cheap process. And I'm not dumping donuts, okay? I'm a small guy, okay? So...
So, you do have plans to do additional work with remaining land, and then you would come forward with a site plan?
That's why I bought the property, you know? That's why I bought the property. If had things gone a little differently, you might have had your site plan right.
Can we, is it possible to do a waiver and then say that he has to come back to us within a certain time with a site plan? Is it possible that we can waive it now, but then say you have a certain amount of months to come back to us? Is that possible at all, or not?
There's not a provision in the town code that allows for a temporary waiver?
Okay.
Could I add to that, if you don't mind, please, Scott?
Absolutely.
I may not be opposed to that, because I really just want to get this over with.
Right.
When I purchased 16 Creek Road and 14 Creek Road back in 2004, I was granted a one-year waiver, I guess. I don't know what they called it at the time, but I was granted a one-year approval for a contractor's yard, of all things, right next door, for one year. And the provision was, I had to come back and, you know, get a site plan, and then that was that story. So, I can tell you from my own experience that that was done. And if that's what it takes, I mean, because I would like to develop the property, but right now, I just got to get, first things first, I got to get tenants in here, I got to get square, I got to get square with my bank, and I got to be in a position to fund this site plan approval process, because that's expensive, and ultimately, what good is a site plan if I can't borrow the money to build the building? And the bank wants to know what's my occupancy, you know, it's that simple.
Mr. Bryant, do you have an idea of assuming the board were to give you the waiver that you're requesting without the limitation on outdoor storage, when you might come back?
Um, as you probably know, it's difficult with survey these days, you know, I like to say I can just pick up the phone, but it's, it just drags, everything just drags, everything just drags. This is, this is March 16th. I'm gonna, I, you know, I'd like to say by the end of the year, could be a year in total, but I'd like to try to shoot for the end of the year, but it could be a year.
Does the waiver run with the property? So, if he, if he obtained a waiver and say, next year, you're like, I can't do it, I've put too much money into this, and he sells it, would the person who buys it receive the benefit, or it's just limited to this applicant?
Well, this is uncharted territory for the board. The board has never done a waiver before that longstanding members of the board and longstanding town staff can't think of a time where this was done. So, it, that's one question. My, I think that it would, if you're granting a waiver of a site plan, typically, these are, it is the use and not the user. And so, I would argue, you know, I mean, obviously, we'd have to look at it, but I would think it would run with the land. Now, I'm just reading the code section, which says that the town may waive the requirement of site plan review in whole or in part. Arguably, maybe. There's some authorization where you could do a temporary wa, you know, the part being the duration that it would be a permanent waiver, but it's, this is all uncharted territory, so...
May I be heard on that, briefly?
Rather than, than, I can see it being difficult to condition a waiver on a time period contingent on making an application, because nobody knows how long the application would take. But if, there is also a provision in the code that allows the board to rescind a site plan approval. Could the waiver be made for a period of time at the end of which that paragraph was enacted to rescind it, incorporated in the resolution? In other words, that would effectively, effectively making it whatever period of time the board was comfortable with.
Waiver for a year, or something. We're making sausage.
May I be heard?
I'd just like to add one thing, if I could, please. I have no intentions of selling the building, even though my wife has other thoughts about the whole thing. But, you know, I'm vested in this town. I've been here since 2004. I, with my own hands and my shoulders that don't work anymore, really built the first piece. And I tell my son, whatever you do, don't sell it. You know, I'm vested, and I like the location, and I swear, I'm not looking to sell this thing. So, don't, don't worry about what happens in a year, you know, that I'm going to sell, because that is not my intent. I put way too much into it, so. This is my retirement, and hopefully someday, my son's retirement.
Dean, did you want to speak?
Just briefly, I would suggest that, you know, whatever it's worth, and obviously, you know, that's my client, I don't see why the board couldn't add that condition if it chose to. And in fact, I think a condition like, like that, you know, would seem, in a way, more consistent with the spirit of the waiver than, you know, offering a waiver on a contractor's storage yard that prohibits outdoor storage.
I mean, if these other parcels that Mr. Welty just mentioned that are in the works, that haven't come yet with a plan, I would fall right into that category.
I mean, the bus yard has come in with a site plan. We've looked at that a couple of times.
Yeah.
Now, they're...
But even that's been a while.
It's been a while.
Even that's been a while.
It's a lot, it's a very complicated project. I mean, we have, you know, said that we are withholding enforcement of the fact, because I know you have some of the spaces occupied now. We've actually written to you and said, we're not enforcing it for the time being, and that's so that, to give you the time to get a site plan done. I mean, so, we have been trying to provide that time. I'm not opposed to temporary, you know, if we can figure out a way, if the temporary works for a period of time.
Conditional for a year.
But I, you know, at some point, we need to see the site plan, and...
I guess it sounds like you're not sure exactly how you're going to develop the project.
Well, one of the issues was, and I hope you appreciate this, Mr. Welty, I suggested, well, come in with a site plan for just the building, then, you know, we'll come back and amend that later for everything else you're going to do. But there's a, there's a cost associated with that. There really is a hard cost associated with doing it twice. I don't want to do this twice. I want to do this one time. So, and that's what I would propose to do now, is just, this is the plan for the whole site.
So, you're just looking to get it moving right now, and then, and then you do have other future plans for the site, whether it's a storage unit or whatever?
Yes.
That you want to come back with a site plan for?
So, what's the difference between what you said, he said, I mean, he's running, you kind of have a shut eye on it, not enforcing anything, and like all the other ones that's running today, compared to starting to a new territory and opening a Pandora box of giving waivers and, and how we enforce the waiver, and all that stuff?
Well, I do feel like we could have had a site plan probably done by, by now. I mean, you know, in all honesty, if that were where we started right away. It's not that complicated.
Just so the board knows, the last site plan that was in place for this project was, I think, 1999, and it was when it was used as a warehouse, a machine shop, basically.
Yeah, it wasn't a site plan. It was a CO. I don't know what's...
It's never had a site plan.
I don't think it ever had a site plan. But there was a CO from 1999, and it was for a machine shop. The entire building was used for a, of some kind.
So, right, so what should have happened is, when the use was changed to the use it is presently, the, whoever made the change in use should have come in and gotten a site plan at that time. And that didn't happen. So, this has been operating without benefit of a proper site plan for quite a while. And we don't know exactly when the conversion is from the prior use to...
And if we're granted a waiver on, on a site plan now, then what constraints would there be on the contractor's storage use of the property? Would there, would, would, would any part of the, I mean, would there be any constraints?
That's the issue that would be addressed if there were a site plan. There would be geographic limitations on where the contractor's storage would occur on outside. There would be probably delineated paths if needed, you know, where things could be parked, where they couldn't be parked. I don't know if there's any, like, water or buffer issues that would need to be addressed. So, those are the, I mean, the standard types of things that the board looks at when you do a site plan. It would go to engineering for engineering review to see if there are any, you know, environmental or whatever issues there may be. And this waiver does not have that benefit. It's seeking to, you know, get an approval for the current use without having to go through the site plan process.
If I could just say that, I would not exceed whatever, like, historically has been illustrated, you know, in, in photos. I'm not going to create any new areas. It's just existing ground.
You've already cleared some of it. As we said, yeah, it's cleared a lot.
I've got some trees hanging over the building, and trees that are leaning like this. There's a whole forest in the back, you know? The roof drains would clog up with the leaves falling in. It's a flat roof, and I've got a, you've seen the electric service that hangs off, but I want a berry, like, a tree hanging over that. I mean, it was just, there was just no money put into this building. Everything was just let to go, you know?
Yeah. It was one of the Fitchett area buildings back in the day, I guess.
Yes.
And that predated zoning even.
Is there a concern, too, if we grant a waiver in this instance, that it's creating a precedence that subsequent applicants will ask for a waiver? I mean, I understand that things didn't work out with your municipal search, but surely you're not the first applicant who's had that happen to them.
But the fact that it's in the code, I'm not a lawyer, but it must be in the code for a reason.
But it's apparently rarely used.
But it, but it's in the code. So, either the town board, right, should remove that, and not place that burden on you to wrestle with it, or there it is to be utilized. I mean, right?
So, to answer your question directly...
Maybe after this meeting, you'll appeal to the town board to remove it from the code. I don't know. That's a for you to decide.
It would allow, it would set a precedent for other applications that meet the criteria. But keep in mind that the criteria is a change involving less than 400 square feet of new construction.
Yes.
And then you have to show that there's no new traffic patterns, no new water uses, no, so it's a fairly restrictive use, but it still would allow anything that would meet that use to be granted a waiver.
Basically trying to use it the same way it's been used for years.
Yeah.
The same fire engine parked in there, and such like that.
Well, I mean, the interior of the building is one thing. I think it's, as the undefined nature of what could be done outside is the part that, I think, is the reason why a site plan is typically required for outdoor storage.
Well, I guess I saw, you'd be, said you'd be willing to, you limit the outdoor storage to just, you're not farming it out, you're just to your own stuff and the tenants, and what the tenants have.
Yes. Just for tenants and just for myself.
So, it's not leasing out spaces for something.
Would these provisions be clear in the waiver?
That, yes, that, we could specify that in a way, related to his own stuff and the contractor's stuff.
Do we need to take a vote as to who is for and who is opposed? And then this way, we can get like a clearer idea?
I'm not sure we had to run to everybody. I don't know if Rocco's there.
I understand your dilemma, I mean, I...
We've talked about this. It's, it's, it's a conundrum.
Yeah.
It's a bit of a conundrum. It's a bit of a conundrum.
I mean, if.
To read this draft as written, the waiver, he would have to agree to all the provisions that are covered under a site plan. Wait, I'm reading it.
Well, if you're talking about provision two, that's talking about building and fire codes?
Right. Building code, fire code.
But building and fire codes are not the same as the zoning code.
Okay. See, that's the only thing I don't see yet.
Right. And that's not here because, right. So, I mean, one of the things that, one of the difficulties would be the undefined nature of the outdoor storage. If you wanted to limit it to present conditions, I don't know that there's record evidence of what the present conditions are. And so I don't know how you would enforce, you know, an argument that they had changed or been expanded, so.
We'd have to race out tomorrow and take a bunch of pictures, I guess.
I will tell you this, though, if it helps at all. In the back, it drops off. So there's an area that's always been there, traveled from that, it's always had storage and whatnot. And then it like, it drops off. Used to be a racetrack or something in the back. There was a track. If you look at the photo, like that, that big area?
Yes.
To the rear. I remember one, I bought the property next door, you know, now you got little locust trees. I started cutting some small stuff, which the code says I can cut anything less than six inches of breast height, so I started thinning out that stuff, to kind of get it back to where that is a little bit. But it drops off, okay? So I'm not doing anything down there. Ultimately, my plan was to, when I get my site plan, basically it's a whole. The bus depot sits over here, my storage sits over here, and this is a whole. So my plan is when I come back is to fill that hole in, okay? It's part of that plan. There's a lot of logistics to, you know, it's a fair amount of material, probably seven or eight thousand yards. But when I come back, that's part of that plan, to fill that in, and then utilize that, whether with buildings or storage or whatever the case might be. But I think it's purely, already clearly defined that I'm on top of where that drops off. And then, you know, down there, it's prickly bushes and woods and what have, you know, I have no intentions of filling any of that in without site plan approval, so I think it's pretty easy. It's not like it's all just flat, and I can just keep expanding. It drops off.
So am I hearing you right, that you would come back to the board for subsequent site plan approval for something else you plan on doing with the property?
Well, that's what we're, Ms. Gemanti suggested, and I'm okay with that. I mean, if that's what it takes, yeah, I'll come back. You know, I wasn't gonna say, give me a year, I'll come back with my full site plan. And it's not just for the building, but it's everything else I intend to, intend to do there.
Yeah, it sounds like you basically just want to get the, you'll get the rental income going, and then while he's developing, what he wants to do on the site.
Doesn't the waiver as written allow him to rent the building and use it?
But not the, but not, people in the building.
I have a landscaper there.
The landscaper in the building needs to have his.
He's gotta go. But then what is up doing there? Or if another Mason contractor, or any contractor comes along with a little machine and wants to store block, I can't rent it to him, so it really doesn't do me any good.
But when you purchased this property, did you think that, like, that you had that use available to you?
Well, all his contractor trailers are out there, there's stuff in the back.
But I mean, just in terms of what it was zoned for?
It's heavy industrial. It's absolutely zoned for that.
And so, under what he purchased it, did he have the ability to store it without a site plan? So, I feel like I'm missing something.
The zoning hasn't changed. The zoning has always been the same. A contractor's storage yard was always permitted on this site. But for example, if you wanted to put a warehouse in there, you'd have, because it's a change in use, you'd have to come in and get a site plan approval for the warehouse. This had a prior CO for a machine shop. And when the use changed, the proper approvals were not obtained by anyone to allow the current uses to be there.
Okay. Which is the storage yard?
We have classified it as a storage yard because.
There are a lot of things in that building.
Okay, so it's that, it's the change in.
I could be here asking for a detailed shot. I could, there's a whole host of things that are permitted in heavy industrial.
So the CO said X, but when you bought it, the conditions there said Y, and you were looking to continue Y?
No, the municipal search said a predate zoning.
Okay.
You know, there is a, clearly there's a cloud. Would it be possible to refer this back to the town board and Jim Nelson and ask them for some kind of clarity?
I don't, on what? On the code itself?
Yes. On the whole question about waiver code.
Well, I mean, I think the code is pretty clear. I mean, it says you can do this, right?
And it's the restrictions.
It's just, it's a question of what conditions do we want to put on that? I mean, is it just a blanket? I don't know.
I guess that's, you know, to move things along, let's, you know, maybe we should just do a little straw poll. I mean, I feel if we could put a restriction of his own, his own and for the contractor's equipment there, that may, maybe in a year timeframe to come back with a full site plan. It may be.
Would we document what is there now outside, so that we can verify that nothing has been changed and added?
Well, it won't be nothing changed, but if he gets a tenant with it, he may have a different trailer there versus the trailer.
Well, I have two more tenants to bring in, so I don't know, what they may or may not bring, I don't know.
But as far as he cleaned up all the tires and all that stuff, so, you know, I was there months ago, and it was a, it was a total mess compared to the other day.
Would it be, in a way, because I mean, the whole site plan is to protect around for water and other things, would it be the provision to make the waiver in a way that not to?
It would be a temporary waiver.
But also in it, that no expansion that would affect the things that the site plan will protect?
I don't know.
How do you do that?
Yeah, you know, it's hard to know.
How do you do that in a waiver? That's what a site plan does.
Right, without no, so a site plan would give the board the benefit of existing conditions. And that's really what we don't have in a documented form. We have pictures of what's going on on the site, but we don't.
I think we made a submission. I think if you go through the file, there's a submission.
There's a survey.
A survey showing the areas, yeah.
But for example, if you were to come in with, for a site plan, there would probably be buffering requirements, there would be, the contractor's storage would probably need to be, it might need to be fenced in, there might be other things. And that's not on the table right now. What's on the table is a blanket waiver of a site plan, with the idea that the property would be used at some future time would be, there would be a site plan application either for this use or for a different use of this site in the future. So, I mean, one of the arguments we've had, or debates we've had with council all along was, why not just apply for a site plan? And then we wouldn't be having these conversations. And as Scott indicated, he doesn't want to do it twice, because what's there currently is not his ultimate plan for the property. And so his reason for not applying for a site plan is, he doesn't want to go through the process and spend the time and money twice. And then it's up to the board, what you, you know, how you, what you want to do. At the end of the day, this is very much a board discretion.
May I be heard one more time briefly?
Sure, go ahead.
It sounds like one of the directions the conversation has gone, and it sounds like Scott, you know, speak up, but you're amenable to it, is the limitation for one year, and the limitation that only the owner and tenants of indoor space could utilize the outdoor space. And I think both of those are clear, clear directives for Scott to follow, and assuming he's amenable to it, and it's ultimately his call, I don't think that raises questions of vagueness or difficulty to enforce.
The concern with that that I would have is, my preference would be not to see the outdoor storage expanded, for example, to cover parts of the lot that have not been used historically for outdoor storage, or recently for outdoor storage. So, I mean, I wouldn't want the entire thing to be used for stor-, you know, I could rent a two-foot inside office, and then store pallets and pallets and pallets of things outside. And I think that's part of the concern. But actually, that's really a board question, not a lawyer question, sorry.
I understand.
But even in that scenario, let's just say a Mason contractor comes in, okay? Because I have had contractors, that's part of the appeal of buying these properties that are next door, have had different contractors come, and they all want outdoor storage. They all want some outdoor, whether it's for their equipment, whether it's for block, sand, or what have you. They're all, you know, I'm actually kind of providing a service in a way, because they're all in their backyards, they're out the town, and you're enforcement agents. We have the same problem. We're busy chasing them out of their backyards, they're operating, and I need a place, an industrial place. So, you know, I just can't say if he's gonna have ten pallets, but guess what? Ten pallets sit there, they might be there for a week, they might be there for two weeks, and they're gonna go on a job until this next shitner comes in, you know? It's just hard to say. But, you know, I can't pick who's gonna come to me, you know, in terms of looking for that kind of storage. But that's the niche I'm trying to fill over there.
So, does everything, I mean, when we talk about storage here, is denied in the way that it's rock and stone and all that stuff, or there are other type storage that you think about?
Are you talking about hazardous materials?
Well, that's what comes to mind.
Yeah, I mean, I'm thinking of, yeah.
That's what comes to mind. Maybe a carpenter wants to put a stack of lumber there, or maybe, you know, there's any, right, any number. But I mean, I don't want barrels, I don't want drums, I don't want any liquids, anything of that nature, you know? But what comes to mind is, you know, Mason contractor, paving contractor.
Nothing toxic or nothing.
No, nothing, to be treated wood or anything like, with leach in the ground?
No, 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 no.
Under the rain?
No, I had a phase one done before I bought the property. The property came back clean, except for one oil tank, which I got a permit, and I removed the oil tank. So, I mean, I fully intend to keep the property clean.
Would the waiver include some kind of provision of what the use is? I mean, that is limited to?
Well, it already is. The contract yard is the use.
What?
Contract yard is the use, but.
Are you saying, could we say no hazardous material?
No hazardous material?
Could do that.
No, anything that could leach in the ground? Because the whole idea is protection.
No storage of outside fuel tanks, no storage of any drums of any kind, anything, you know, whatever, whatever you might think of. But I don't want fuel tanks stored, or any of that kind of stuff. I, you know, I don't want that. I don't want that.
Property goes back up on the fall kill creek too.
Yeah. So no hazardous material. Get that qualified as.
I understand.
It's not good for you, it's not good for me. I mean, it's just, you know.
Anything that would give you moving, but without any impact on the environment around you.
Mr. Chair, I think it's time for a straw poll.
Yeah, I think so. Let's see, who would be in favor of doing the waiver at this point versus?
Again, I think it's a temporary waiver?
Yes.
For him to come back with a.
Give him a year to look at a site plan.
With a site plan within a year.
And a, and only storing his own or tenants' materials. As far as I know, there's nothing in the waiver regulation that provides for temporary granting. And at the end of the year period, if there's no provision for temporary granting, the applicant should say, there's no provision in there for temporary granting, therefore this is invalid.
I'm gonna ask my attorney, can't we agree to something right up front to that effect that says, I can't do that? That I waive any future claim to go back on what we agreed to tonight? I mean.
But I agree with, you know, it's easy to see it, I mean, to say it now. I think would be more on limitation of the use and securing that there's no hazard, because what if after a year he comes and says, I'm still working on it? What are we gonna do?
At that point.
Then he has to.
Well, so at that point, my, if the board were to grant a waiver tonight and condition it on a year, that there would be a site plan application made within that time, the waiver would have a provision that says something to the effect of, you know, if that's not done, then the waiver becomes null and void. At that point, he's operating without a site plan and without a waiver, and the town would be able to go in and enforce.
What would prevent him from just simply applying for a renewal of a new waiver? Well, he could, but the board would have to approve it again if we were to do that. So, at that point, I don't think we'd be as.
Another question I would have, is it submitting a site plan, or, because you could submit something, and then, you know, if you're not duly pushing to get your, you know, comments responded to and all of those things, you could be, you know, it's up to you how long you want to drag it out, but you could drag it out for a long period.
And that could be a two-way street. I've been there and done that.
True, but that's, you know, not our intention.
Or mine.
Right.
Yeah.
Also, does it meet, if, if, if it can only do something with the site based on the storage usage, which would ordinarily require a site plan, then does it in fact meet the waiver criteria?
Well, that was my question. That's what I was thinking in my head, like, what's, you needed a site plan before, you need a site plan now, so where's the, like, that's the disconnect that I have in my head.
I mean, it's basically, it's a carve-out for this person's particular circumstances.
Right, and is it because of the posture of what has happened that you're asking for the waiver? That's the part that I'm missing.
Just to talk about the outdoor storage and the storage, if the board tonight wants to say, I can rent to an auto detail shop, an automobile repair shop, all these things that are permitted in heavy industrial, I'm fully prepared to have that conversation, okay? And whatever those uses permit, okay, if all the cars have to be stored inside or whatever, that's fine. But what's been laid out is contractor storage. It just goes hand and foot with contractor storage, that they're storing materials outside. That's what contractors do. If we're talking about auto detail, I mean, I've had people want to have all kinds of inquiries. This could go in any direction, and it would still be conforming to what's permitted in a heavy industrial use.
With site plan approval.
But I think, well, why? If there's a waiver in place, and I meet the criteria, why couldn't we be talking about an auto detail shop right now?
Then you get to hazardous materials.
Or, I'm just using that as an example. I'm just using it, it could be a laundry, it could be a lot of things, but I think we kind of narrowed down, and it suits me, I'm in the storage business, contractor storage, we thought that was the simplest venue that we could all get our arms around. But what comes with that is the ability of those contractors to store materials or equipment. It's joined it to hip.
All right, let's take a poll.
Yeah, let me ask Lisa a quick question. Okay, if we, we were going down a path that said, if you make a waiver for a year, and then after that, what the consequences of that might be. However, if we also have the town board review this, and they take out the waiver provision, and then that year is up, and there is no site plan, that waiver, is that waiver still in effect?
If the town board were to strike this provision of the town code, then at the expiration period of the waiver that the planning board is granted, there would be no opportunity for a renewal, there would only be opportunity for a site plan approval.
Yep.
So I mean, I'm leaning toward what Peter alluded to earlier, if we grant a waiver and then have the town board review this plan, and hopefully, not the plan, but I mean the code, and have that stricken out of there. Unless they want it in there, then if they want it in there, I think we're stuck. I mean, at least clarify some things.
Right, at least clarify it, or something like that, because that's where I'm leaning. I mean, you know, I think it's there, we're stuck with it.
All right, let's take a straw poll before we do a motion, I guess. I guess I'm, with those restrictions, I'm kind of in favor of a temporary one-year waiver, but how about you guys?
I'm not in favor of a waiver.
I mean, because I hate to see a businessman can be caught into these situations.
Yeah, it's been a tough couple of years.
It's a very, so, I'm in the favor of the waiver if put a restriction on the use.
Yep.
Okay. It's a subcontractor, dust, I mean, stone and whatever, non-toxic things.
Yep.
Give it for a year and then you come back, I'm in favor of that, but just to give him moving and hopefully he will be true to his back, to his words, and that area will prosper.
All right, I think I would go right now leaning toward a waiver with the restrictions and also a review from the town board, because they put us in this mess, and so they would have to figure out how to get us out of this mess.
Prefer the town board to...
Well, because we can't write the laws.
Right.
So, the code, we can't write the code.
Remember something, keep this in mind, a lot of people pay a lot of attention to decisions that are made by this board.
I understand.
When they, it's not going to take long for work to get around, we're providing waivers for a site plan. And if you think that this is not going to open a floodgate, and they'll be totally justified by Representative Mr. Bryant or Mr. Jones who came after Mr. Bryant, what are we going to say to Mr. Jones? You provide this to Mr. Bryant, why aren't you providing it for us? This is what a precedent is all about.
I guess I would say it was a precedent because it's in the code that we're...
It's a precedent because it's the first time it's ever been done.
It's the first time, well, as far as we know.
I'm telling you, it's the first time it's ever been done. And the reason probably it hasn't ever been done before is...
Nobody found it before I did.
So, here we are.
I was the one that came up with the idea, so.
Yep.
Yeah.
And Ben?
From what Mike and Lisa said, it's in the code, you can leave a site plan, it's in black and white, we're getting into a lot of gray areas here.
Yep.
So, if you go strictly by the code, he should be granted a waiver. If you want to put some attachments to it, that's fine, but that's the way I see it.
All right, I think that's what we're leaning towards.
So, if I'm counting noses, that's five people that would grant a waiver. I would propose the conditions that the board has discussed, that the waiver be granted for a period of one year, that current conditions on the site be documented, only tenants of the indoor space can use the outdoor space for storage, and that there would be no storage of anything toxic, no liquid, no drums, no hazardous materials, no storage of fuel or fuel tanks.
Lisa, can I just ask one additional thing? You said tenants of the indoor spaces, is that the current tenants or maybe even future?
Or even future tenants.
Even future tenants.
He's trying to fix up the building, the house, additional.
So, but that's up to a year of, within that one-year period.
Right. There are five potential rental spaces, and I believe two of them are occupied right now.
All right.
I don't like the position we're in.
No, it's a tough one, but I would, all right, as with the conditions that Lisa has suggested, I move we do the temporary waiver.
Second.
Moved in second, it called the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Can we add...
I think you should do a roll call vote for this.
Yeah, do a roll call vote.
Right, but can we add also having the town board...
Yeah, that's, I'll do it as a separate motion.
Okay, all right.
And like, what about to your point about the timeframe for things?
Well, I assume the one-year means they have to submit by one year, is that...
I was just going to say that the waiver has a duration of one year.
One year.
So, having approval would...
And then, at that point, the applicant, you know, if the, if there's a pending application at that point, and the board wants to grant another month or two, that's one thing. If there's a pending approval at that point for another site plan use, but the way I see it, the only way that is easy to figure out is the waiver has a duration of one year.
Yep, so just, so I'm clear, one year, I submit that application. Okay, let's just take worst case, right, one year. I submit the application, that waiver exist, continues to exist, or is that waiver over?
It's over.
The waiver ends, but when there is a pending application, there is a provision which says that their, like, violations are not enforced as long as it's inactive, so then the town board has...
So, it's like states.
Arguably, that's a way to put it.
Okay.
So, yeah, but if the town planning board or staff believes that it's not being vigorously pursued, they have the ability to, you know, deal with it at that point.
How long can it be stayed? I mean, how long can it stay active, for years?
The application?
Yes.
Well, I think then it becomes a call on, I guess, I guess it would be staff's call to say that this isn't really being pursued.
Are there milestones that prove that...
I wish it was that clear, and it's not, it's...
It's a wearing a mess.
Yep.
A wearing a mess.
Right, but I mean, for example, if there's an open public hearing and it's being continued with time, then it's active. If there's, you know, the applicant hasn't been before the board for a period of months, then the board would, you know, could move, you know, dismiss or deny or do whatever with the application, so.
All right, we have a motion, and it's seconded, so let's do a roll call vote, Joan?
No.
And Almet?
Yes.
And Rocco?
Ah, yes.
Yes.
No?
Peter, no, myself, yes, so motion passes five to two.
Thank you.
And we hope that you...
Thank you very much.
I see you made the efforts to do cleanup there, and I hope that continues.
Town board opportunity continues.
I wish I had been here.
I'm sorry.
Back in June.
And at this point, I also want to move that we have the, that we make a recommendation to the town board to review the code for site plan waivers and clarify some things or eliminate.
Second.
Moved in second, it called the question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, Mike, you're up next, I think it would be, Short Term Rentals?
Yep, so, Short Term Rentals, the Code Update Committee has, as you know, been working on emerging land use issues or hot fund issues that are currently not addressed in the code, and one of those is short-term rentals, things like Airbnbs, Verbo, all of those kinds of things. So, this section of the code would require a permit for short-term rental, and it would make a distinction between different types of short-term rentals, those that are hosted, where the owner resides in the dwelling with the guests, and those that are unhosted. Unhosted would be further broken down into two categories. One would be an unhosted rental that is accessory to the residential use, and that is, it's the primary, it's the primary residence of the owner, or an unhosted that is a, really a commercial use, which is, it's not the property owner's primary residence. And it would also provide that the town board would limit the number of the unhosted principal commercial use, short-term rentals, and in any given year, and it would start with a number of 30 of those. And those would require special use permits by the town board. So, it basically allows the town board to keep close tabs, I guess, on, you know, the ones that are most likely to be problematic in terms of potential impacts to the neighbors and so on. So, that's, that's the, what it says, we're being asked, the town board to set a public hearing for April 12th, and so this would be, because it amends a portion of the zoning code, they were asking for a recommendation from the planning board.
I've got a couple of questions.
Yes.
How long will the special permit be in effect for?
I think it was a year.
It's a year, it has to be renewed.
It has to be renewed.
Well, it says that may be issued in, it's in any year, so, but they would be, each permit would be in effect a year.
Yes.
And what would be the trigger point for them to increase it from 30?
That would be if they, if they feel that having 30 of them in the town is not, let's say, not causing any significant issues, maybe they'll, they could say that we would grant 50.
If they're getting, yeah, if they're getting pressure from applicants, you know, they're asking...
Or if they're creating a lot of problems, they could rein it in and say, we're only going to allow, you know, 20 or 10.
Right, so if I read this here correctly, when I read it, so, so for instance, like a Verbo, where you go rent a whole house, there's only 30 of those allowed at this point?
For non-owner...
Right, well, Verbo only does that.
I mean, my daughter's done a bunch of these, and they're great houses, but they're there, they have it all themselves, okay.
Well, it's actually not 30, because I believe the Verbo can also be somebody's primary residence, it's just that they're not there while you're renting it.
Sometimes they're there with you.
What's that?
But the VRBO, sometimes the owner is in the same building.
Really? I thought they weren't.
Yeah, no, sometimes they are.
Airbnb, they could...
No, they are.
Sometimes they are, I don't know.
Sometimes they are.
There's about 30...
No, the listing said that they, it's like an apartment in a bigger house, so they're there, they're just not in the unit with you.
There's about, you know, there are many of these different apps, right, for these kinds of rentals now, that, you know, in part, one of the challenges will be for us on the enforcement and monitoring side of this will be to keep tabs on where these are listed. Fortunately, there's a company that does that service for us called Granicus, and they have a host compliance software, basically, that we would be able to obtain, and that would be paid for by the county, because the county also works with that, with that software firm. So, you know, it's an attempt to finally put some regulations on these. You know, other important considerations are that, you know, there would be insurance that these places that are being rented are being inspected, right, for fire and safety code, which currently that's not necessarily the case. There's a whole host of other things in there, but...
All right, so Mike, you talked about enforcement through the app, but what about general law enforcement? I mean, I assume that this is going on.
It's in the ordinance, everything is in the ordinance.
Part of that, the software that he, the software he mentioned goes out and polls all these sites, the VRBO and the Airbnb, and they can, to report out and just say, you know, this house is advertised on Airbnb, but it's not, you don't have a certificate for it, so submit for it.
The data right now is kind of old, because we did the research a year or so ago, but at that time, thanks to the county, we learned that there were 30 some odd of these already in existence in the town. That number could be higher or lower now, I have no way of knowing, but we will have a way of knowing once we have this.
And, like, say somebody came before for a permit, but somebody in the neighborhood already has one, like, is that at all a factor, or you just assume that they're complying with what's required?
The town board, if it's a special use permit, then the town board would have discretion, and they could say, well, we don't, there's a concentration of them on this one area, it's a problem, and we're not going to allow anybody there.
I mean, yeah, we talked about a way to do that in the code, I think, but it wasn't easy to...
Right, and just so you know, it's a town board special use permit, not a planning board special use permit.
Is it?
This would be the first time that...
Reason enough to recommend positive.
Right, this would be the first time that the town board would have special use permit authority. They're legally able to reserve it to themselves, and they would do it in this case because they want more control over where and how many of these permits are issued in the town.
I mean, basically, you know, this would be a better way to regulate it than just, you know, some towns have gone crazy, and if they're anywhere near historic sites or whatever, then suddenly, everybody's buying, somebody's buying up all the houses and creating trouble.
Anybody who is familiar with what happened in the fourth ward would have deep concerns about the conflict between private enterprise...
Yep.
And single-family residential neighborhoods.
Exactly.
Because they destroyed, like, several neighborhoods in the fourth ward. I have a question for you. First, I want to tell you, you know, when I heard about this, I had a lot of concerns for those reasons, but then I read the ordinance, and it's really, I mean, every concern that I had was addressed in the ordinance.
Thank you.
Good job, you're so funny.
Yeah, that was really good. I just want to read you just a quick, there was a, coincidentally, we got the Association of Towns publication last month, they had a big article about short-term rentals. I also recommend that New York State Planning Federation has a great course on short-term rentals for the public, you know, you can go, it's accessible on the website anytime.
New York State Planning Federation.
Yeah. But anyway, the attorney in the Association of Towns reads the point basically about local law versus, in summary, towns can and should regulate short-term rentals to align with their comprehensive plan. There are a number of legislative tools available, although any of these tools should be adopted as a local law, which is exactly, hopefully, what we're doing.
Yep, that's, yeah, we have pretty good advice.
So, I would give you and Lisa and Jay, the town supervisor and the town board, a lot of credit, because I think this is something that's probably pretty, pretty important. Our neighborhoods are the foundation of our community, and this could be, you know, a virus that's really got to be very closely monitored.
I mean, one other issue that happens with these short-term rentals, is, you know, these companies buying them up, and that takes housing off the market for affordability and stuff, so that's, so that's another issue, that's another reason we're trying to...
Probably the first time a home buyer's...
Yep, I saw an article, I think it was BlackRock, their subsidiary is buying up 20% of all new housing stock, it's turned into rentals, especially when the interest rates are going up, so it's good that we have some regulation in place for it. Any other comments from board members?
Just one, just one other one, is there, would there be a fast path, or is it through the normal town board and monthly meetings that is, there's an administrator?
I doubt it has a special meeting for it.
No, they would, they would do it, and the town board meets twice a month.
Does it have to fly through the zoning administrator?
Yes, that's where it starts, yeah.
But again, not if they're a monthly meeting, you can submit it.
You can submit the application.
Submit anytime, and then they'll have to go to the town board meeting.
Okay, so there really isn't a fast path, there's just, okay.
Yeah, we'll leave me twice. Okay? Sure. Okay, the planning board conveys a positive recommendation to the town board regarding adoption of the proposed town code amendment.
Okay, it's moved in second to convey a positive recommendation for short-term rentals. Called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Yes, and thanks for all your hard work on this code, it went back and forth for quite a while.
Thank you, you're on the Code Update Committee.
Quite a few months. I didn't do the work, I didn't do the work that the staff, you know, Kristin and Eric and Lisa and Mike did a lot of the work.
And Michelle, there's a Michelle.
And Michelle, our consultant as well. All right, we've got some, do some of these?
Sure. I move the planning board, I'm sorry, Eastdale Village Lot Line Revision. I move that the planning board grant a 90-day time extension of conditional lot line revision approval from April 12th, 2023 forward to July 11th, 2023.
Second.
Moved in second, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Does that, does anyone have any comments on any of the time extensions? All right.
No, okay. Eastdale Village, I move that the planning board grant 90-day time extension of conditional subdivision approval from April 17th, 2023 forward to July 16th, 2023.
Second.
Moved in second, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Greystone Dayhab, I move the planning board grant a 12-month time extension of conditional site plan approval from April 15th, 2023 forward to April 15th, 2024.
Second.
Moved in second, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Wiltsea Estates, Lot 19 subdivision, I move that the planning board grant a 180-day time extension of conditional final major subdivision approval from April 18th, 2023 forward to October 15th, 2023.
Second.
Moved in second, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
And Verizon Store Additional Retail Expansion, I move that the planning board grant 190-day time extension of conditional amended site plan approval from March 22nd, 2023 forward to June 20th, 2023, and to advise the applicant to obtaining site plan signature and a building permit are necessary to preserve site plan approval.
Second.
Moved in second, called to question, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. That's all the business on the agenda.